For the is 107 on the council's pages end.
Page thirty-seven for the public.
I'm going to make one note here about rental registration is that the expenses of rental registration will not bring to the general fund the full 146 that we usually bring to the general fund, but it is a hundred thousand short, so the general fund will only get forty-six thousand from rental registration this year, not the 146.
The council's aware of that originally intended by a police officer.
What is that gap again?
A hundred thousand dollars.
Rental registration, we have approximately twenty-seven hundred and fifty rentals in town, we find new ones every day. Bob and Dave Green of the community housing offices, I oversee the program, and Eileen is the rental registration clerk. We find new rentals every day when we draw from trash calls. We find people, eighty-five dollars plus a three-hundred dollar fine. The program brings in two-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand plus fines, so at the end of the day, we usually have around sixty or seventy people who don't pay. And when we send court summonses out, we can clear up most of it in-house, they want to pay the three-hundred dollars, and we go to court with the judge, sometimes we have to go to trial. You might get two or three that have legitimate excuses for not paying. So we usually get another like nine thousand and fines somewhere around there.
The total rental registrations is two thousand one.
Well, it's twenty-seven fifty times point eight times eighty-five, which is like two-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand, plus between eight and nine thousand in fines.
And what we have budgeted is two-hundred-and-thirty-five four fifty.
So you've got Eileen gets paid out of rental registration, she's the clerk, Bob and Dave Green, they work twenty-one hours a week apiece. I don't think they can work anymore of that because the union rules. It's about it, I need the rest of it, this is all.
A third of your pay.
A third of my pay, okay.
With the left side, you have an increase?
It's been a while, I'd like to look into one, if we can go up to a hundred.
I think you should look at going by the bedroom instead of the unit.
No, that's not a good idea. The town will face liability on that, because if I, if we say that there's.
Used to be the bedroom, used to go by the bedroom.
Yeah? No, it did, but it was one of my ideas to change that, because if we say, oh, there's two bedrooms and there's three, and somebody dies in the house, then they're going to come after the town.
Dies in the house because they're in shock.
Well, if there's a fire, and they don't have an egress window, and it's illegal.
Right.
I think it's better doing it this way, and dacking it up to maybe a hundred, I mean, a lot of these landlords are getting, you know.
Because the thing is, the one and two bedrooms are mostly year-round folks, right? And then, you know, four, five bedrooms are mostly someone who owns the rent, so it's more of a use tax. I think it would be.
That's up to the council, I mean, as Sean said, it's been eighty-five for like three years, maybe we could bump it up to, you know, another fifteen dollars, that would bring some more money into the program.
That covered the costly officer.
I don't mind, I don't mind an increase, but I think you should put it, I mean, you know, on the bedroom, because it's more of a use tax, because the guy who's in the two bedroom who lives here year-round.
It's fifteen dollars though, Patrick.
Yeah, well, you know what, you know, fifteen dollars here, to Rhode Island, state of Rhode Island there, and, you know.
So Tony, if we did go up fifteen dollars, let's say, per rental, with the units that are multi-rentals, like Atlantic East and those places, do they pay a hundred per unit?
They would have to pay a hundred per unit.
So somebody that has, I don't know, what's the most units that we do have in town? Is it behind O'Neals?
I would say behind O'Neals, Atlantic East, I think Stanley, I stand.
So, so again, I mean, not to try to get into a legal side of this, would it be, if we did the hundred, would there be a way that we could cap a multi-tenant unit, so it's not putting such a burden on those that are trying to bring families and people in for rental?
Yeah, we could put a cap on so many units, maybe like twenty units and cap it there or something like that.
In that way there, it's a little fair, because if somebody's trying to put twenty, thirty units in our town, and trying to bring more families or people into the town who don't stay year-round, it would help them.
Sure.
I'd like to at least look at that, and then, that way there, we're doing our due diligence as far as those people go as well.
So we increased the rental registration fee in the budget by fifteen dollars per person, fifteen times twenty-seven fifty is what?
Forty-one two fifty.
And what line item would that go under?
It is on your budget, page sixty-seven, and it's the four-nine zero eight one, so the two-thirty-five four fifty.
Wait, page sixty-three?
Sixty-seven?
What was, I'm, I'm in, no, take it back, I'm working.
I'm by the bedroom.
Would that be 107?
107?
Yeah, but the problem is, people lie, unfortunately. I'd rather do it the way we're doing it and increase the fee, I think it's a more user-friendly, and it's going to cut down on, it's going to cut down on staff, or I need more staff if I do that. So it's going to be, you know, getting this increase in money.
So if you have a five unit, I mean, a five bedroom, and all of a sudden, the next, the next year, if we do a by the bedroom, and it's a three bedroom, you won't pick that up?
They're going to, people.
Well, they can't turn a five bedroom into a three bedroom unless they knock down a wall and try to do a bigger bedroom.
They can do that, yeah.
Right, but they won't, because anything, they want a six bedroom.
You've got to cross-check how many.
Right.
You know, it's going to be, it's going to be too, it's going to be very time-consuming, and I think.
When it first came out, it was five.
There used to be by bedroom.
Ten dollars a bedroom.
You should be ten per bedroom when it started, it didn't work too well.
So that revenue could go up to the two-seventy-six seven.
Right, so that would be.
That would be line four-nine zero eight one?
Correct. And then that would fall into mine, five-zero-two-one-six, police protection, so that would increase by forty-one two fifty, and I'll complicate that even more, and I'll bring the general fund revenue up in the general fund.
Okay, so if we budget this change, remember, we're budgeting it, we could still vote on it next year, the council, we could, people could change their mind, but is there, do people want to increase that, or do they want to leave it alone, regarding that we changed this line item, four-nine zero eight one, rental registration revenue, the forty-one thousand two hundred and fifty?
No, it makes sense to me, we could give the police officer that.
Closer.
It's three years, I don't think fifteen dollars is going to kill anybody, and I think if Tony looks into that, you know, the next amount of tenants, maybe we can cap it at some point.
Rent the whole building?
Right, so that would be a whole different discussion, this would be changing.
Fifteen dollars, I'm happy with that.
Per rental.
It's been three years, I mean, you're going on five bucks a year, fifteen dollars, I mean, it'll probably be there for the next.
Even a hundred dollars.
Right, still.
What do you guys think? All right, so Laura, what was that number on that, on rental registration?
Eight-seven.
Two-seventy.
Two-seventy-six seven, and then on the next page, under, it says police program, becomes eighty-seven two fifty, and then if you're really following me all the way through, then we go back to page. Yeah, I'm just trying to find the line, page three on the general fund side, about a little up, about halfway down, red, red, rev, that would become eighty-seven two fifty.
Okay, so Sandy, everybody wants to budget that fifteen dollar increase, maybe that would have to be voted on next year during fiscal year. Right, anything else on that registration?
We already went through permitting, right? Is there anything that you, right, so in the permitting, how do we work that per square foot?
Okay, for, what happens is, if it's roofing, siding, or, you know, like a remodel, you go by the price, if it's a new house, I have to figure out all the square footages. The applicant doesn't put the correct square footage on, we include basements, or living area garages, I have to figure that out through the plan, which I do.
Do we have a base number roughly that we are at per square foot?
Forty cents a square foot for additions, in new, new single-family dwellings, in new commercial buildings.
And what's, does the state have a fee?
We're kind of, the state has a general fee, they don't go by square footage, but what we have is kind of similar to what they have. The thing is, if you go by, people can lie about prices, but if I go by square footage, they can't lie, they don't lie, okay? Because on a single-family dwelling, it's a minimum of fifty dollars for the state, plus the forty cents a square foot, so they can't get around anything, even on commercial buildings, I mean, it's ten thousand square foot, times point four zero, and if it's a million dollar, I mean, you know, five-hundred thousand dollar project, it's five hundred dollars, so it's not fifty for a commercial project, the full five hundred, you know, given state. I think the way we do it now, people can't get away with, you know, underestimating the cost of a project.
Are you vacuuming the square footage, or is there room to grow?
We could grow on that too, I mean, I, you know, we could go up, why don't we go up on that too, that's been like that for.
Warp and dime?
Yeah, whatever's going to be, you know, fifty cents a square foot.
Because you're not talking a lot of money when you're talking a half-million-dollar house, that's going to be five hundred dollars for a permit, you're talking another dime.
Well, our permits are fairly cheap, compared to like South Kingstown, North County, they have to pay impact fees.
Right.
And we don't have impact fees. We may have a sewer lot development fee on certain projects, that requires sort of thirty-five hundred dollars, you have to pay, you don't want a third of that, fully. So it's something to look into, I mean, if we went to sixty a square foot.
That's not that major of a jump, Tony.
Twenty cents, I mean, you know, it would generate some more income.
Fifty percent jump.
Yeah, Patrick doesn't like that, but, you know.
No, you know, I mean, I think Ricky's right, I mean, a half-million-dollar house, five-hundred dollars.
It's been forty cents a square, I've been here for twenty-five years, it's been forty cents a square foot, I think since.
It's crazy, it's crazy when you look at the rest of the state, I mean, we are way down there.
And we don't have any impact fees, that's the thing. So I think, you know, I know people don't want to hear it, but people always say, hey, now again, it's permits are cheap, so.
Well, we'll fix them with that, we'll fix them with that, don't worry about that.
And we're still bringing in, you know, forty thousand a month, so, it'd be nice to bring in sixty thousand a month, wouldn't it, a little extra?
So fifty, sixty cents?
Which line item would that be though?
So if we're talking the building permit line?
New construction only.
Yeah. Plumbing, mechanical, electrical, that's a whole different.
Estimates, and they lie on that.
There's a minimum, and then goes away in line with the state.
So it's, it's on page.
We do a kitchen for five dollars.
Go ahead.
It's on page three, again, inch and a half down, on VI permits, even though Tony seems to think he makes a little bit more, on target in eighteen was three-hundred-and-fifty thousand, he's about two-seventy so far this year, so that's why the three-fifty was budgeted again. I don't know what percentage increase this would bring to the revenue.
Yeah, I think this would be harder to budget, I think this is something.
Well, he should be able to have an estimate, if you give him a feel for it, he should be able to go back, and maybe I can have the increase in the revenue for you for tomorrow.
But additions, right?
All knocked off, additions, and then it's knocked down and reboots.
So if you, do you think you could do that tomorrow, and so that I can have it by tomorrow night, Tony?
What, as far as?
An estimate of what, an increase of fifty percent would do to your revenue.
Okay, sure.
Right, that sounds good, that's a good rating here.
This isn't as simple as the last. The state was in permitting, they wanted us to go in line with the state, but we don't have to, and why should we?
I agree. How about as far as collecting the fines, I know that in the past, we've been behind a little bit with rental registration fines, are we up to date with?
Oh, yeah, we're good, we have, last week, we had, we try to split up the court dates because it gets, you know, it gets crazy, so tomorrow, Thursday night, we were trying to take like, you know, seven and seven, and then, yeah, fine, we're doing good. A lot of people just pay, they don't want to go to court, so they just pay the three-hundred, we just get rid of it, because the judge says, you know, he'll say, if you want to pay it tonight, the three-hundred fine, outweigh the court costs, and some people want to go to trial, and they don't, they don't win, I mean, you might have one person that wins.
Is it the first time they've registered, unusually, or is it?
No, the same violators, the same habitual violators are the ones not paying their fee.
Lock them up, let's lock them up.
They come in, oh, I forgot, the judge, yeah, you forgot last year, took three-hundred.
Is it legal to have an escalating fee based on multiple violations, secondary, third violations?
Well, under, under the zoning ordinance, you can be fined up to five hundred dollars a day for each violation, as far as the three-hundred, I don't, I think you could give him, give them a three-hundred dollar fine plus court costs, I don't know, I don't think we've looked into that to give a bigger fine on the rental registration, I'm not sure of that answer, I'd have to talk to the attorney about it.
So are we looking at fifty cents or sixty cents?
Well, I think he's going to come back with a number, because it's not just, building permits are additions and knockdowns, so Laura's going to take it with him, and then Thursday, we come back.
Additions and houses will be fifty cents or sixty cents, I'll go over it tomorrow, so me and I will work on it.
So has it always been, as long as you're current, has it been forty cents?
Yeah.
Do you have any idea what other communities would have?
They don't do by, they don't go by the square foot, they go by estimated cost, so that there's like higher, we're kind of in line, maybe a little, we're not too far off, but.
Ask Katie, got the environmental impact failure, it was about twenty-five hundred.
Oh, it's crazy.
Put a shovel on the ground.
It's crazy.
Thanks, Tony.
Okay, thank you.
The next is.
Thank you, Tony.
Next is IT, council budget page twenty-six.
And the public page nine.
I've got three and a half people, myself as manager of the department, I have a systems administrator assigned to the police department full-time, police of fire, public safety, and I've got another systems administrator here governing everything else, and I have a part-time who comes in and works full-time in the summer and one day a week outside of that. We basically support the town's entire IT infrastructure, which doesn't sound like much, but it's actually quite extensive, I was going through the list today, over sixty-eight pieces of software, over five hundred devices at varying degrees of PCs to tablets, laptops, cell phones, network equipment, televisions, you name it, we support it, and also varying degrees of support related to those types of devices that we have to cover on a daily basis, it's quite extensive, for every department too. So, full-time wages is covering for myself and my systems administrator here in town hall, Tony, and, I'm sorry, Kevin, and Tony's covered in the police department budget for public safety, so they don't see his wages in there. Part-time wages for the, my intern slash part-timer, Caleb, and overtime, next to nothing usually, that's the longevity help, it's all contractual.
Just go right down to professional services, two-one-one.
Professional services is a line item we keep in there for any help that we need. As an example, we had a network outage a couple weeks back, actually about a month ago now, we had to call somebody in for help with that, we have some intricate networking stuff. We tend to be master, or I'm sorry, a jack-of-all-trades and master of nothing, because we have to support such a broad scope of things, so that's what we keep that in there for.
What happened, oh, the heat?
Actually, no, we had a power blip in center of town, took out the UPS and the network switch.
Do you get redundancy on AC?
We do, definitely. The computer systems, most of the PCs in the building all have UPSs, the building itself has a generator, takes a little less than a minute to come back to come up with an outage.
Keep everything cool?
Yep, yep, that's it, so that's what professional services is. Contract services covers our files, internet access, and the website hosting and support. That's been relatively steady in pricing, hosting support for the website actually went down as we changed, what was it, how we pay for our refresh every four years, they were charging us one dollar figure every year versus having a contract for four years, some crazy pricing when they came up with, so we actually saved a couple grand, which is nice. Let's see, contracted services, we jumped down to, supplies is our office supply item, pays for basic metal being, wiring, and stuff like that, as well as toner, paper, various things like that. Professional meetings is, that's my professional conference once a year, as well as, I got money in there for doing cybersecurity training for the entire team, bring us up to speed, see if there's anything we want there we can learn, so that's what that is. License and dues is the bulk of the budget, that covers an entire list of software, and it's basically, it's the support and license fees to use software that runs from a unit system, new time attendance system we're buying, to hosting support for our VM systems, also the phone system, firewall support, SSL licenses, so we can secure our email system, that's what that covers.
Why is that increasing by thirty-five?
Thirty thousand of it, I'm sorry, thirty-one thousand of it is the new time attendance and advanced scheduling system, that would be used by public safety, the beach, parks and recreation in its entirety, water and wastewater, I think I figured out to nearly three hundred employees, part-time and full-time, and eleven, I'm sorry, nine locations, it's going to be sensibly used, be a good change, get us into the twenty-first century in time of attendance.
So that's rather than the handwritten?
Handwritten time cards and three old punch systems that were being used by public parks, rac and the beach, we'll replace all of that. That's the big increase in there. And we also have general increases on all of this that we increased by, and the OPL system, we've built up a little here and there, over there.
What's the OPL system?
OPL takes care of all of our revenue income, except for buildings, actually, they went to that EWD system, but that covers tax administration, tax collection, utility billing for sewer lots, sewer assessment, and the rental registration system. Next one is. PC software is, we're buying a new package of software to render our DVDs for the council meetings, and the school committee meetings, that's actually a subscription-based app, if you can believe it, through Adobe, that's also PC software, we need something that comes across during the year.
That put it in the cloud, or is it?
No, that will still be here, it takes a lot of rendering power, so it's actually set on a PC. Telephone services is our cost for the phone system and long-distance calls. The office equipment and repair is actually extensions to warranties on our older physical servers, that we want to try to keep for a little bit longer, save some money there, much cheaper than actually buying and replacing the box. And then office equipment is, I think that's the one that's been cut, that's just basic equipment we need to buy during the course of a year if something fails within our department, and we try to help all the departments if we have the cash to let them do something.
So let's look at your capital, Patrick.
So capital for the council is on page fifteen, there isn't one, there isn't one for, so you'll have to discuss the projects, because there isn't a public version of this.
All right, there you go, that's all right, I got it printed out this way. Should have a line item for.
Your fiber optic, I can help you out if that helps, okay.
Yeah, thank you.
So the first project that he has is for resources, tax resources of ten thousand dollars for the fiber optic cable maintenance.
That is money, so we have, in event our fiber optic network fails, or we have a natural disaster, we have to refix it in a rush, this has only actually happened once, but it costs us thousands to do it, we had eighteen really take out the fiber drop at the Kenyatta water tank, so this allows us to have money set aside to pay for that, without having to dig into something else, that's what that's for, if we don't use it, carries over, which is nice, it doesn't impact again. The second one, PC replacement program, listens.
Right, and that's, for operating, is this forty thousand dollars?
Yep, this is going to replace thirty-five computers, thirty standard workstations, and five upgraded workstations for public safety and dispatch, and two within the community development department. We have computers that are reaching nine and ten years of age, and these get replaced, and they'll say they need to go. Industry standards, actually, three to five years, we're actually pushing it up to eight, between a discussion between myself, my two sys admins and my part-timer, I think it's unrealistic to do it at five, I don't know why my counterparts are doing that, but we're getting eight years out of them with no problem at all, then we shoot with performance, it's going to go beyond that, it becomes an issue, so I think ten years, eight years is a good mark, and this, first two years, we'll take care of those over eight years, and then we follow line, which eventually jumps.
We had in there, Dan too, he's also hoping up the police department line, we used to pay, we used to buy all our computers with the justice assistance grant, which we haven't had in several years now, because of lawsuits, we've broke administration, it's day one out, so.
Ten standard workstations and three for dispatch, part of this. So we're writing computers that were actually bought in two thousand and ten, if you can believe it. That'll be an ongoing project, we should see a drop, and you should see in the following years, and that project will actually drop down, you see a bump again, at least in eight years, but there's nothing, what can we do about that? Next one is.
IT software for fourteen thousand.
Fourteen thousand dollars is actually going to go towards replacing office in the public safety department to bring them up to what the town hall is at, or conversion two thousand sixteen, we'll replace that, maybe the other year, this gets them up to where we're all at. IT equipment, ten thousand dollars, that's a reserve fund to replace any failed equipment, although across the year, that's done under some type of warranty. That actually paid for our replacement switch and UPS this year, that line item did, we're trying to recoup that in from money from national grid, hopefully it happens, but you never know. Let's see, number five, the network infrastructure, a hundred and five thousand dollars, that is replacing the entire network switch infrastructure for our network, a lot of this gear is becoming extremely aged, especially at public safety and town hall, this will replace it all, get it from the same company, we're looking at HP Switching right now under a state MPA contract, this will get us into the twenty-first century in security, twenty-first century in management, and eliminate all of our old equipment, one of which died in the power failure, and the older switching that's actually sitting in public safety right now. It's a lot of money. It's a lot of money, but it's something we really, really need. And it's also going to have a wiring component with that money to rewire all three fire stations. They were all done somewhere along the way, haphazard by either firefighters or somebody else. Just to replace that with brand-new equipment, brand-new wiring, and get them up there. We actually saved some money on this, it'll be a little higher. We replaced the access points for Wi-Fi already, so we'd use that project in the long run. And...
That's it?
Yep, that's it.
If you prioritize those capital projects, would you have some that are higher priority than other?
Network, PC replacement, much higher than rest.
Just as a side note, when the manager went through the budget, we did move one project of thirty thousand dollars that was requested. It has been postponed.
That's number six.
Number six, backup improvement.
So that's pushed out? That's pushed out.
What about that IT software that's at one time?
Yes. IT software is the Microsoft Office upgrade. Actually, we, correct, we can't, we're going to decommission the exchange server that takes care of internal email for public safety. Unfortunately, the older versions they have are over there now. We'll support the way we're going to redo it, so unfortunately we actually have to do that. By moving their installs to a different version, it cuts the ability to incorporate two exchange servers instead of one, unfortunately for Microsoft.
So the fiber optic cable maintenance, I mean, it's ten thousand, but that could be just delayed till next year if we wanted to, right? It's a maintenance program?
It's actually a fixed program, so if something happened to it, hurricane, a blizzard, a truck taking it out like we've already had once, this is what paid repairs.
But we don't, we don't have that program going right now.
Yes, it's an ongoing, it's an ongoing, it's an ongoing program, and capital, just so you know, any capital that is unspent does get rolled. So if we have this ten thousand dollars, he doesn't spend it, then we can reevaluate the next year to see if we need more. Right now, we anticipate spending the ten that we have there, so this is replacing that ten.
Again.
Cable runs through all three fire stations in public safety. The town hall, wastewater, Kennedy Avenue tank, Point Judith tank, substation that used to be Galilee.
All over town.
All over town, community center, public parks maintenance, Clark Road, Parks and Rec. Yeah, lots of places.
So the IT equipment line, which is ten thousand over the six-year capital plan, like is that something that we could, like, put to a cut of like eight thousand a year or five thousand a year over the six years?
If we were to cut the IT equipment, that would be, if we had to, that would be where it would go.
Do it, like, so it would only be a small cut this year, but we could maybe like...
Yeah, if we had to, that would be where it would go.
Back to the contract services, so nine thousand?
Yes.
So I just want to make sure I'm clear, that is, that covers the town government website?
Correct.
Civic Plus?
Civic Plus, yeah.
And that's, so that's the hosting, the site itself, like, and the support and maintenance and security and everything related to that site?
Correct, and a four-year refresh, which we just started.
Is included in that?
Correct.
So every four years we get a redesign, no additional fee?
Correct, don't include it in that fee. I think it's a pretty good deal.
Yeah.
We've had a very good relationship with them, very responsive, support's been good. Good system, when you need something to do with something, it's already there. The network creating, repairing the wheels, which is nice. And the rest of that is the files, internet access for the entire town.
So that's in that nine thousand too?
Mm-hmm.
So what's the actual cost of the, for the website?
Website is six thousand, one thirty-six, thirty-five.
So five hundred dollars, like, five something a month?
Something like that, yeah. We pay it a year, but, yeah, it is cheap.
And then the PC software, you said something about the town council meetings?
Yes, that is software that we have, we keep money in there just in case we find something we need or something comes up and we want to start something new, or something comes from you folks. We keep it small enough there, but the bulk of that is new software to render DVDs for the council meetings and school committees and upload to YouTube.
Okay, and is there anything in here for, one thing we had talked about was the livestream?
Streaming, yeah. There's nothing in here for that, this was all built up long before we talked about that, unfortunately.
Okay, got it.
So maybe make a note for Thursday, since Dan said if there was one, maybe that IT number four, we could have a discussion about on Thursday, that's something we might look at.
Any other questions for Dan?
The new screen is working out great, thanks for showing that up there.
Yeah, looks great, yeah, it's bright.
It is, it is, people can see that home, that's important.
Great, thank you, appreciate it. You're welcome. It was a good project, we just got to get some stuff in to clean up the cable and stuff.
And Dan, looking into that live stream, what are you looking at, the numbers sort of?
Rough estimates, to get the booth moved back, add a couple of cameras to do it brightly, probably ten to fifteen thousand, that's a rough, very rough number. We're going to try using ATR Treehouse. We used to do the audiovisual for the Philharmonic on the beach, but they've been unresponsive with phone calls and emails, so we're going to go somebody else who's in an MPA and see what we can get from them, this company we purchased the cam, where we have right now from. And so we can get, try to get them in here and get a quote. Very rough estimate, ten to fifteen. It's a lot of wiring involved and what we're looking at. Equipment's not all that expensive, it's wiring and labor.
Thanks, Dan.
Thanks, Dan.
Library is basically its own fund, and it's page one oh two and page thirty-five.
So our budget overall has gone up, so I'm going to explain some of the expenses for the best, my authority. So our revenues, which you'll see, consist of fees and fines, which is what we get for watching great books, of course, but it also includes replacement books if people lose them. That one goes into there. The interest revenue, that comes from the one. Donations have been down because a lot of people are giving to a building project. So we don't get, per se, for the library. The state revenue is twenty-five percent of the operating budget from the previous year, or what, if we don't spend all the operating budget, so then it's a percentage of what we spend. So it has gone down a little, it's a hundred and eighty-one thousand, nine hundred and fifty-nine. And that money is based on our annual report also, which we submit usually. It starts in July, has to be turned in by September.
Patty, is there money for the regular fundraising, any fundraising effort you have is?
The friends do most of our fundraising, the donations is what we get. So state revenue, the general fund transfer, which is what the town has given us, is eight forty-one, one oh three. That has remained consistent for five years, we have not gotten an increase. Full-time rangers and part-time, and the overtime, which is a Sunday figure, we're open from September till the end of April, on Sundays, twelve to four, and we pay overtime for that. So those figures also include a four percent raise, which, it could be less than that, it's based on performance of raises that we do yearly. So some may get less, some may get more, so it usually balances out. The buyback sick is the hundred and eighty days. After hundred and eighty days, we have six full-time people, and of those six, three have been there quite a while, so they do get a little bit of that. We also have our employee pension contribution, which has gone up a little. And then if you look at the usual dental and the health, that's all kind of out of our hands. Post benefits, which I guess, the OPEB, that's went up quite a bit from, our budget from this year was eighty-three, it's gone up twenty-six point nine percent. And as far as I know, that's based on the full-time wages, a percentage of that, which I believe was thirty-three percent, is that right, Laura?
It is, and I will be making adjustments to that, actually, townwide. We will discuss that on Thursday, what our contribution to OPEB would be. It could come down as far as sixty-seven thousand, twenty-five, sixty-seven thousand, twenty-five dollars for the library on that particular line, from what you have here. So basically, the changes that I make as contributions from the library to the town were adjusted through fund balance from what the department may have requested. So their adjusted fund balance of using a hundred and fifteen, again, will change, but it's only based on items the library pays directly to the general fund for OPEB pension, health benefits. And that actually now sits, because I've made some changes, as a use of fund balance to balance the library budget of seventy-six thousand, eight hundred and eighty instead of a hundred and sixteen that you're sitting, sitting within your budget.
Can you say that one more time?
Roughly seventy-seven thousand dollars.
Professional services is partly due to planning for hiring the library consultant through a project, library building project, and also some of the fundraising that Dan Barry's been doing. But some of that money is also coming out of the Lori Lujan's funding committee, money that was raised, you know, when they changed the name, so there's still money left for that. So we've been using that to pay for the fundraiser. General insurance, I got it, I just got it, I didn't know anything about it, but there was a reevaluation of the building subjects, and so our insurance went up from eighty-seven hundred dollars a year to twenty-six thousand a year.
And I can explain that as well, so when I was going through the budget, as far as insurance goes, it was basically done in previous years as percentage of budget. When I looked at our exposure, we call it exposure, to submit to the interlocal trust, we had a list of the values of property. So I have the values of property, and I did our insurance, our general insurance, our property insurance, as a percentage of the value of the buildings. And as that result, that's how it changed.
The assessed amount?
No, it's their, it's their value they use to give us our premium. So it's probably a replacement.
But the, looking at the townwide assessment of buildings, everyone else is in a town trust number? Because the ones that are broken out as a line item are, look like enterprise funds, aside from the library.
Yeah, they get charged there.
The enterprise, but not like, the police station doesn't get charged.
The general fund has one, there's a, there's a line item called townwide insurance for the town?
Right, I guess my point is, why is the library treated?
It's its own fund.
But it's treated like a, we can raise money and we cannot, is actually...
It's, the library building is, rests with the library fund.
So it's not a town property?
The library building rests with the library's. You can discuss that other side of...
So is it cheaper to roll it into the town insurance?
Six of one, half the, well, you'd be changing their insurance line and the general fund would pay for it.
Live shop around for different insurance companies?
The trust.
Under the full trust, self-insured?
And there's one allocation that goes to the library, that, you know, that A thirty-one, and then the line items within it, unlike what we did with mental registration, the library board can move within those line items, with whatever the dollar figure is allocated each year. So the twenty-six five is one of those line items, the insurance has to be paid, so.
With the general insurance, which other town properties moved out of the general insurance, you know, percentage?
It's a whole different calculation, like I said, it was a percentage of budget, but now it is a percentage of the, I think it's probably replacement value that the trust gave for all the properties.
So like the police department building, that member changed for them as well, or not?
It wouldn't be in police, it's in the general fund under general insurance. And it honestly came down almost a couple hundred thousand dollars when we moved the assets for the enterprise funds out, water, so the beach, as well as, you know, library, Middle Bridge, Sunset Farm, all of those.
So those are the other properties that moved into the enterprise, well, not enterprise, but...
Anyone who had physical property listed, it became allocated to those funds.
Okay, so the beach?
Beach, water, wastewater, Middle Bridge, Sunset, Kenny, Towers.
Are it the school buildings, or no, that's separate?
They pay their own insurance.
What about the Belmont building, who's putting that there?
Oh, it's not insured after July first.
What?
It's not insured after July first. There are no expenses from July first.
Laura, is that true?
I don't know why she bases that the town has insurance, I don't know.
Well, it's not listed in count twenty-three, which is...
No, there's nothing in, that's a library capital fund?
So the Belmont is a different, that's not listed under every library?
That's under town.
Yeah, it's town.
Well, library's one property too, so it's...
It's just the, here under twenty-eight, disappears in July.
So I have page twenty-nine with the library building that says, which I'm assuming is Belmont building.
It's the capital project.
So that's where the insurance would be?
The, I don't have my list for that insurance.
But the twenty-six five is for the...
I can always adjust that.
The twenty-six five is for the existing library.
Correct, it is not the Belmont.
The other buildings, Laura said they're town-owned, they come under, there's one item in the budget that's for all those town-owned properties. And then if something happens to be part of an enterprise fund, such as Middle Bridge properties, they're going to show up their insurance. Unless I'm misspeaking, Laura, their insurance would show up under the Middle Bridge Management Fund.
Correct. So although this is a town-owned building, Laura, it's just listed in a different place because it operates, after giving the money, they operate the building to pay?
I was just, a new way to calculate, they had insurance in there before as a percentage of budget. I did it as a percentage of the building, here's the list from the trust. Yeah, I can change it, I'm not, you know, but...
No, and I appreciate the way it's broken out. I guess the problem is, when we discussed our budget in January, we had eight thousand as our general insurance number, and, and we had, you know, other funding, and now it's twenty-six thousand.
And I appreciate that, but that is, I...
That's from the trust.
Well, it's a different way to do insurance, it was just, they, again, if it was a town department, I would have been changing that number, because I'm not going to get into other issues.
Right.
So then the eight forty-one transfer, general transfer, eighty to forty-one thousand?
Yes, that's... Yes, that's the maintenance of effort number, that is the same, so it is the same number we gave last year.
Yeah, so it's been the same for like five years, four or five. But now they have the additional insurance cost that they have to cover?
They also, they also have reserve fund balance. I know, I'm just saying, when I look at things, I look at the general picture. That is the insurance expense that I would charge any other town department. How you decide to finalize their budget is up to you.
Yeah.
What is the reserve fund budget balance?
About seven hundred thousand?
Six eighty-six, four forty-three.
Where's that?
One oh two.
How long has it been there? How, how long does it take to come to that dollar?
I don't have a history on that.
We don't get any information on that.
It's in the audit.
That was a surprise to us, I think. Last year it was in the seven hundreds, and we thought it was in the three hundreds last week, having a report, so I don't know what happened.
So the six hundred and eighty-six thousand in this capital fund from this reserve fund balance? Have you all know how long it took to get there?
No, but we're using part of it, if you, if you notice, just, it's now down, but we are using some, to balance their budget. I changed their, their budget to use some of that fund balance. Currently, it is, can I say, seventy-seven thousand of it.
So there was seven oh nine, you can follow that.
So there was seven oh nine, and then you used seventy thousand?
They used twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two thousand.
And it's now the six eighty-six.
So now we're down to six eighty-six, four forty-three.
Again, part of this money was Maury Lougins.
That's separate, that's separate.
Is there a separate line?
Yep, that's restricted, this is unrestricted.
So where would that be?
You have the audit? It's in the audit.
So your fund balance is really more than that?
Your fund balance is really nine oh four, three twenty-eight. As of June thirty, two thousand eighteen, it was seven oh nine, was unrestricted. Fifty is for capital, the ninety-eight, nine sixty-two, which I believe was the Maury Lougins' friends, is restricted, as well as forty-six thousand two ninety-nine, and it basically just says library programs. I would have to ask either you or the auditors exactly why that is restricted. I am unsure.
Laura, where, where are you with that?
On the audit?
Yep.
Page one eighteen. I think, let's see. I'm not sure, we each, we each have the same copy. I think so. Does it have library listed? Does it look like this? Sorry.
It looks like that, that's library now.
Now, library is the second column in?
Yes, library column.
Can I go to the bottom, nine?
Nine nineteen, one eighty-nine.
That's including liabilities, go up one total fund balance. Nine oh four. And here, Laurie, if you want to look at it, just so you can follow us in.
So is this money built up because the budget's not being used, everything in the budget?
It's similar to the schools' fund, the school that had the fund balance years ago, you know, maybe four, five years ago, and the school had a fund balance, the school died, and, and now the library has a million as a fund balance.
So again, on building maintenance, this is about a million dollar budget, I take it with what the state puts in, a million and something. So are we putting away three percent of that to be able to maintain the building expenses? So we have?
You're asking us if this is a statutory thing?
No, no, no. What's being put aside for building maintenance, just in general, per year?
Nothing is being put aside for that. This is basically the overrun of, for instance, we're, we're paying into a pension fund, there are two employees who have not been allowed to be put into a pension fund. So that money's accruing into our budget, and if we don't spend it to give them pensions, it's going into the reserve fund.
Right, and now you've got nine hundred and four thousand in this reserve fund, that's, that's a lot of money.
But again, nine hundred and four is the aggregate, right, Laura?
Yeah, so seven hundred.
So, so there are some fundraising charitable donations that are restricted in that, so it's really like seven hundred and four?
Yeah, it's six, it's six eighty-six, and then the nine oh four would include the, that other semi-private.
So six eighty-six has been building in this budget, and you've got a building down there that needs some work, I take it?
We have a new building, that needs to be renovated as well.
Well, let's talk about the old one, because that's the one you're in right now. The roof condition there is, like here, is very poor.
I've got an estimate for that, just to repair it.
Right. And how much was that worth?
Twenty-five thousand.
And that's to repair?
Mm-hmm, just repair. Well, different portions of the roof were pre-treated differently, so there's some places that they can repair it. We said rubber lining would work in some places, and then replace the shingles. But the problem with that roof, we've always had issues, is because of the additions.
Yeah, they've added over the course of the years, right.
Yeah, just kind of, yeah. And a lot of it is winter time, we get the ice dams.
Right. But presently, we're not putting any money away for improvement on the building each year. We're not setting a fee aside, whether it's, like the schools are doing a three percent. So we're not doing any of that, so at some point, that has to come into play, and you can't just have a building that you're not maintaining.
Well, you have to, this ten-year plan for a new place has limited how much money we put into the building. It was, wasn't going to be a ten-year plan. So when we go to look at a big expense, we, I think it was two years ago, looked at almost a hundred thousand and change to have it repaired, and the council chose not to give us that money, so we only got fifty thousand to repair. We did try to make plans for it. And a lot of our repairs over the years, since I've been director, which is almost twelve years, the Champlin foundations have supported our capital improvement projects. We've had new carpeting, new lighting, painting inside and out, new furniture, all that's been funded by Champlin over the years. However, when Champlin heard about us possibly moving out of that building, they refused, I shouldn't say they refused, but they recommended that we not ask for any more money, because they didn't want to put money into a building that was not going to be long-term.
I remember that conversation about the fifty thousand several years ago.
It was to fix the roof or?
It was the roof. And so, but, so the fifty would be part of, I'm assuming that's six eighty-six, like that's like that's fund down.
It's separate, that's, there's a line item.
That was capital, that was capital.
So that's still there?
That's still there.
And we were fortunate that when Stanley happened, the front facing the water side had lost a lot of shingles, so that was fixed through the trust, so half of the roof is new. It's the backside that is not new.
But a fund balance is essentially a surplus or activity that if you wanted to use that square area nearby.
Did the roof leak?
Yes, yes.
Like bucket type leak?
Yes, depends on how the wind blows, hasn't leaked recently, but?
So it needs a new roof?
Half a roof.
Half a roof. So we're looking at what, a hundred thousand for that, fifty thousand, roughly?
Roof repair twenty-four.
Well, that's repair. You get into that roof, and you're going to find it's probably more than twenty-four.
But there's six eighty-six to repair the roof.
Right, well, there's six eighty-six there, not only to repair the roof, I mean, what else? I mean, how long has it been not ADA compliant? How many years has that been?
So, so part of the problem with this conversation is that we're operating under waivers from the state, and one of the waivers is physical space, which we do not have enough physical space in our current building. So unless you're going to put eight million in our building to expand it to the twenty, twenty-four thousand square feet, there, there really was no impetus to repair a building we're moving out of. So that's what's going on. You can replace the, you can make it ADA compliant, you can replace the roof, we're still in violation of the state's mandates of space.
So let's say that you move out of that building, now the town has that building.
That's right.
Where do we get the money to fix it?
Why don't you sell it?
Having six hundred and eighty-six thousand overflow in the budget is quite a bit of money. I mean, to me, that's, some of that money should go back into redoing that building so that if we do get somebody who, whatever the situation is down the road, we need to put money into that building. I mean, this is tax payable, it was given to this budget to use.
It was given to the library to use for library purposes.
Which is also maintaining the building.
We, we cannot pass state mandate on seven hundred thousand, we cannot add onto that building to get twenty-four thousand square feet.
I'm not going to argue over the square footage of the building. If you keep violating the state's requirement of the square footage, what happens?
Well, we lose the state aid of under eighty-seven thousand dollars, and we can also now be part of OSL, which is the consortium where we share.
Was there a timetable on that?
It's, each year is a different year, the director from OLS reviews, reviews it. Along the lines, we've been talking to over the years, it's been, she saw progress, so she was approving waivers. We did get a letter this year that said she needed to see continued progress, or else they would be looking at it in a different light.
Did they ever pull the plug on the community? Is that essential for?
Not that I know of.
They've gotten close though.
They have gotten close, Johnston almost lost there. And again, they'll, you know, work with the town.
What's the minimum square footage?
I, I mean, it goes on the consultant's report, and I believe that's twenty-one to twenty-five thousand, somewhere around there.
And it's the consultant that came up with the square footage, it's not the state mandate, we'll look to all those, that's what they informed us, right?
It is a state mandate that we have physical space appropriate to the town. We hired a consultant to come up with that number.
But you said it's a state mandate, Laura, that's not true though, but it's not a state mandate, state mandate, you have, have, which you did, hired a consultant, but it was a consultant that came up with that figure, that's what it was. It's not a state number, it's a consultant that you hired's number.
But the state says we do not have enough physical space. There is not nine thousand square?
You need to be even tonight, Laura, because we're talking about the budget.
It's an issue, the issue though is the six eighty-six.
The consultant goes by the guidelines from the state, and they recommend one eighty.
No, no, what it is, is not a lot of states have their actual standards themselves for library stocks. They use Wisconsin standards, which is a general standard, and that's what Patience Jackson used. It is not specific to Rhode Island, but it is a general consensus that that's how you.
So it's one consultant's opinion, it's not the state, but the state makes her opinion?
It is the state, and you were at the workshop where Karen Miller said, I concur with the consultant's report, and if you repair a nine thousand square foot building, you will not get reimbursement.
It's a consultant's opinion, and the state accepted the opinion, is it two, is it different, you're framing it differently?
The bottom line is, this is not, the budgetary issues we have right now are this six eighty-six, that if it's not going to be used for physical infrastructure of the building, if the library board is saying they're not going to use it for that, I mean, then we've got to address that problem, we've got to think about that six eighty-six fund balance that's just sitting there.
Well, how can you think about it?
Well, it shouldn't, just like other fund balances with other, with other funds that we've had, we say, the fund, it shouldn't, it should, what, the square table with the school athletic field, they used it on the athletic field.
Yes, and we are willing to use it on the Belmont project.
But they could also be used, right, to fix roofs and things that exist exactly. And so therefore, if not, then you should, we should look at, like, a way that the reduction in the allocation, because if you're refusing, okay, and if you're refusing that, then you're going to think about?
Man, they had a plan, we had a plan going, okay? And you, yeah, you were with us a little while, then, you know, you'd be railing.
So you're basically asking for the same budget that you've had for the last five years, no increase, and it's still actually short of what you need to operate the library, right? Because you're still using, the thing is, that reserve is going down, it's not just sitting there, it went down twenty-two thousand, they're short, it's going to be down again because they're short. So they're using that reserve. You're trying to force them to pay for repairs that you want to do, that are going to be useless in a year and a half. Like, they're going to move to Belmont when there's a new town council in a year and a half. Why are they spending?
Such funny, let's move on.
All right, let's move on.
So what are we doing with this allocation? Are we just leaving it?
I'm not making a decision tonight on this.
So currently, the way this sits, as the budget sits from the adjustments that I made, talking back to fund balance, is seventy-seven thousand dollars will be used of the eight hundred and seventy-six to balance their budget.
Seventy-seven thousand?
Mm-hmm.
So they're seventy-seven thousand short with the allocation?
Less, yeah.
Yep?
Yeah.
So they would have like six eleven or six oh nine next year, after?
Depending on how they end this fiscal year, but that's using the six thirty eighteen fund balance. Don't know what the operations are for this year, but I always take then the seventy-seven that they're going to need, that we've changed, and honestly, we have changed, the library trustees budget to fit the transfers that are needed. So it comes down to, right, six oh nine, is unassigned at this current moment.
Yeah.
Six oh nine, huh? Hold it down, payment on the bill.
So we're continuing with some of the professional services, I explained, we, the plan, it's not planned anymore, it's OSL. That gets us a lot for the money, we get all the IT support for the circulation system, we also get software license upgrades, we get e-zone access, which is to, you know, the e-zone books, videos, audio books. So that's all part of the membership that we pay, and the membership dues are based on population. So each town, they look at the population, and that's how they determine what we pay. But I think the rest is pretty self-explanatory. We did put a little extra in building repair and equipment repair. You know, we're going to get a ramp for the back emergency exit. That's, that's about it. Our equipment, we replace our computers, you can see with three to five years, depending on when the warranties went out. And we, usually what we do is transfer the old ones to be what we call OPEC, which is just a simple computer for looking up where the books are located, so the more expensive newer computers are for the circulation system. And again, OSL does apply for Champlin for some of the funding of libraries overall. So in the past, Champlin has paid for computers, but they're no longer subsidizing technology, but they are still subsidizing capital improvements. This year, the OSL has asked for some video equipment so that the people who have vision issues can read with a scanner, so they're asking for that kind of thing for us to help support our operations. So that's why our budget for equipment is not very much, because we do get a lot of support. Any questions?
Any questions?
And just, I think you know, the friends help support us by doing some of our programming, so we don't have to pay for a lot of that. OSL, I mean, OLS, which is the office, state office, they also supplement some of the programming in the summer. And they do contract with the performers, a special rate for us. Normally for a performer, it's three to $500, but they get it for us for 165. So that's a big, a little big deal. That's on top of the need that we get. So we do get a lot of support for OLS.
And again, we have two full-time employees who are not in any retirement plan. One employee has been employed by the library for four years now. He was a hard-time employee, became a full-time employee, it's been over 18 months, still no retirement plan. They were promised to be in the pension, they've still been offered nothing. So again, I want to highlight, this puts the town in a very difficult position. You have town employees, and you are not offering them retirement benefits.
You got an update on that?
It was a council meeting, it was in August, Laura, last August.
Last August, yes.
So that time was set to, to research the matter for a year, I believe, nine months to a year.
Did you have some updated information?
I've been, I've been reaching out, I spoke to Karen Miller and OLS.
You spoke to some other libraries?
Last one I spoke to was Middletown, where they have their librarians on a 457 P. Through the town tax ID, so.
Is there a, at library or town department in the town, or is it Dr. Byd's?
No, it's just a.
It's a municipal library, like we are.
Yeah. Well, Keystone is held, some of the department issues by the craft of resolution, so that their library operates more like a, like a town department. Of course, it doesn't matter, it's by mutual agreement.
And they have a separate contract for the director and the deputy director.
They sell, yeah. They have a mix-up, we don't, we don't work reasons.
Yeah, most, most of them are union employees.
So it's quite a plenty of reporting, so.
Are the union employees part of the town? Are they in the town union?
I don't know what they're in.
I believe it was.
So is that an avenue? I mean, if they're in a union up there, would that be an avenue?
Well, Keystone's a little different, that there, there is a state, state system around there.
I'm just, I don't know.
We could absolutely be in a union, if that's the way we can be in a retirement plan.
I just think it's a shame that the fixes to the bill, they haven't taken place when there's a 686,000.
And you don't think it's a shame that people don't have a retirement plan?
I think it, that, that could probably be used to help put aside money for a retirement plan, but besides that.
Then put them in the pension plan.
I don't know why there's a fund balance sitting there.
I don't know why you won't put two employees in the pension plan when everyone else is in the pension plan. Can you explain that?
They're not town employees.
Really?
Our solicitors here, and, his, his opinion, and the two prior solicitors' opinion as well.
The two prior solicitors had no problem with anyone being in the pension plan.
Town employees, that's, that was, that was a determination, town employees.
There was a 1990 ordinance which said the library employees are entitled to town benefits. And everyone, up until this solicitor, has agreed that they belong in the retirement plan.
All the solicitors consistently said it wasn't town employees, and they weren't getting pensions.
And the issue with the 401K.
They were all getting pensions.
The two physicians that have been denied pensions. One is my children's library physician, I had the pension. And the other was a records librarian who's retired now, collecting a pension.
Collecting a pension.
So those two physicians were always in the pension.
But they retired long before, I mean, they retired, like, what, many years ago, Chris?
Four or five.
Yeah, over 10 years ago, I don't care.
I thought there was a discussion at the last council about the 457.
Yeah, there was, but then there was a hiccup because of the tax ID number. The tax ID numbers seem to boil down that we cannot provide a second tax ID for.
A municipal library, because we're a town library.
So it's semantics. We need legal wordsmithing or something to get around a resolution, maybe.
Or an ordinance.
Something, or an ordinance or something. To, you know, fix this issue and the roof.
So, back to the roof. So there's the RFP out, which talks about a bunch of repairs to the exterior of the building. And then, and it hasn't even been determined what those would be. It's out for bid. So why would the library spend money to repair a roof when there's no plans back or proposal or anything from the RFP? Like, why would you spend that money now when you don't even know what the RFP's gonna cover?
Well, I think we're talking about over the, this period of years, it's been very little fixed in the building. Right now, there's an RFP out.
Well, it's passed, the money's.
That you get the.
Yeah, but.
I know it's passed, the money's.
The RFP may include a new roof line, it could be a redesign of the exterior of the building. Why wouldn't you put money into fixing something when you have the RFP sitting out there right now?
Well, what you should, what should have been done, it was a long time ago, is set a foundation on how much money is put aside each year to be able to fix or maintain these buildings. We've done it with the school department.
We did maintain the buildings.
But there's a percentage. There's a percentage that everybody goes by in the building industry. And you have other buildings in the town that we have to get into those programs. Otherwise, you're gonna get behind the eight ball so bad that you're way beyond fixing the buildings.
Yeah, I think that makes, a reserve makes sense, a 3%, but we also haven't had the budget increased in five years. And that the plan was always to move out of this building, so.
And that's again why a lot of times.
I agree, I agree. It was deferred because you're, you're making the move.
And regardless what happens.
You still would want the building fixed though.
But.
We're not selling. We used to, we, you don't want.
We tried to get it in the budget a couple of years ago.
What, with the 50,000 one in, and there's 686 there?
Well, we didn't, I honestly, since I've been director, that's funny enough. We thought there was 300,000 in there. It's just recently we found out there was that much money in there.
Which 300 is also, would cover some of these fixes. But bottom line, in terms of a budget conversation, I think there's, it's an 841 allocation, I mean, that's where we are. The line items, we don't delve into, unlike any other department budgets. We can talk about them, but our recommendations can be ignored, because we think they have them, so.
So fundraising for the insurance or something, or you just take it out of the?
Fund balance.
Fund balance.
What are the other line items that contribute to that deficit of 77,000?
The pension?
So that's like 50,000 or something like that?
Well, it's an overall. It, it's basically an overall, I, I balance the budget.
Yeah, I just wanted to.
The library, the library board can choose to revise their budget and not spend their fund balance.
Yep. But are you guys, is it the pension that's pretty mostly over?
And I'm not sure that.
The OPEB.
And to be.
The OPEB is 46,000.
Well, the OPEB came back down to the 67,025. That's how I got to the 77. As far as.
So that's where it came out of?
So the, right now, the OPEB dollar amount is 67,025. I have to go back and look at the pension numbers, but as you know, it is an unresolved issue with a couple of employees. So I didn't touch that employee pension contribution. However, for the employees that are actively in it now, that could be reduced. I left the number that the library board put in their budget. But the town, right now, does not require that much of a contribution based on the employees who are currently in the plan.
Got it.
So the capital budget then?
There is no, there is no capital item on the town, on the town.
What about the 50,000?
That's in your budget. That's your budget. You have 50 in reserve, that's sitting in your fund. There is no town capital project for the library in this budget.
But where does that 50,000 show up?
You can put it in your budget.
Add it to the budget.
It's a reserve.
She's saying it's here in a special.
It's, it's there in a reserve. So you said something about the back ramp?
Mm-hmm.
You can just, that, so whatever that costs for the back ramp, if you, if you earmarked it as, and using your reserve of capital, that's fine. You just have to let the finance department know that's what you're using, so that when there is a deficit, we can take it off of that reserve.
Okay, they can take that, for the roof care, spell it to them, Laura?
They can do whatever they want.
Laura, I'm just curious, so this RFP that's out.
Which one?
The library?
Which one?
Uh, the town issued one.
Thank you.
The town issued one. Uh, if that, when that gets bids in, and if one's accepted, how would that be funded this year?
It has to come to the council, and then that will be a decision of parties involved.
But there's no funding in a capital reserve or anything like that for the library?
Or the architect, architectural services, is there a line item right now?
Yeah.
The answer is no. There is no line item.
So it comes from like a general fund?
Or, or if, there are, the library board of trustees.
Well, why would they pay for something that'll?
I'm, that's.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I'm just, it was designated.
There is no earmarked funds for the architectural RFP that is presently pending.
Thank you.
Or, or any of the improvements that could be required?
Well, none of the work stemming from that, yeah. Like, if the plans were accepted.
Correct, there is no funding or project in place for either the architect or, right, in this budget.
All right, thanks.
All right, thank you.
Good job.
Good job.
Good year. Age 28. I don't have a reserve.
So capital, uh, community, I'm sorry.
Do you want to do the town manager, solicitor, and council before fire and planning?
What, just move up?
If, if, if they need to go, yes, I'll be happy.
Do you want, yeah, I think, I just. Yeah, come on. So we'll do.
No problem.
So this is, because fire is a big one, and planning is sometimes a big one, but this is town manager, solicitor, and council, kind of all.
So do we want to go?
We'll do solicitor and council.
There we go, so page.
Solicitor's budget comes out of both of those line items.
Page five. And page two.
Keep the pollings.
Page two, two, agree. Non-solicitor and.
So for solicitor, essentially, it's, if I'm misspeaking, Laura, it's 145,000 budget. It's 120 in the solicitor, and 25 for legal services on the town council side.
Correct.
Yeah. Fair to say, so we're looking at page five and four. Right, so then I'll just.
All right, so other than the 120 that's fixed, there's 60 for general solicitor services. There's 30 for criminal, which includes municipal court and district court. Both are held weekly. And there's 30,000 for planning and zoning, that goes to Steve Marcello. So we have 30,000 of Steve, you have 30,000 basically split between Andy and Emil, who are covering municipal court, and district court, 60 that I earned throughout the year for basically everything else. And then special projects and litigation would be covered in that 25. And.
That's I-50203 on page four.
Right. So, so based on the actual, and based on my knowledge of when Dawson took over and McSally for, for many years, we're far below what you guys have extended with solicitors for probably the past 10 years. This is probably low at any time in 10 years. Candidly, I don't bill enough. I bill very, very little outside the 60,000, even though many of these things fall out.
Will we push it through?
Yeah, it's been, it's been a pleasure. I like to donate my time. So we're significantly lower than, I think Sally was five years ago, six years ago. We're significantly lower than where Dawson was. And we have a team working on these things, so. There's actually four of us working on it, so.
So good, so that's. Yeah, so basically, it's a flat rate, and then there's for the, for the litigation piece. Although it doesn't come out all the time from the 25, Laura, that's why the 25 is there. So I think you probably take it out of the solicitor all the time budget, so that's like a 25, very little was spent on 25.
Whoever does the requisitions does, I don't see the bills, so I don't know which is what.
But I think, so the last, it was 132,000 spent prior year, which was under the 145, so.
Right.
But we had more litigation type stuff this year, so that probably will be a little higher, you know, so. Are there any questions on that?
Yeah, I have a question. So the 25 is designated for special projects litigation, so that would be things like, you know, that voter initiative.
Right, right, the voter initiative, these lawsuits that's been filed.
Yeah.
Foreign related.
Foreign related.
Uh, there's a lot of lawsuits that you may not even be aware of.
Zoning appeals. Zoning appeals, the building inspector sued. There's, there's a lot of.
Personnel.
There's a, there's a lot of issues that don't rise to the, to the weekly informing of the town council, but there's a lot of litigation.
So 25 covers, is there cover that? And then if it goes over, doing an hourly rate or something like that, or?
Uh, we bill hourly anyway, but we've not come even close to that 25.
Oh, cool.
Yeah.
It's amazing to me.
Uh, like I said, we're just not, it's just bad business, we're just not doing a lot of billing. You know, I think, you know, if you were at a big firm, for example, you account for every minute of your day. When you're a small firm like Guff, you tend to give away.
That means I can call you more?
Uh, I always take your calls.
Do you know, you keep checking that?
No, I've never billed for speaking to anybody yet. So I think last year, we used, I don't know, like, 3,000 dollars of the litigation budget. This year, we might be around eight grand, I'm not even sure.
And the suits that are close to being settled?
We've settled a lot of things. We've, we've settled a Bonnet Fire District, we settled that one. We're close to, I think we've reached an agreement on the Sunset Farms, avoiding cost of litigation on that. Personnel litigation, we've resolved a number of those matters. So, yeah, we've, we don't have that many outstanding.
We probably should do a litigation update in the summer after.
We don't have that many open.
Which one was the one? The state of?
There was the fire district.
Yeah, I don't.
The one with state of?
Yeah. Uh, yeah, the notice for Bonnet. Laura, I, I think we've, I think we've resolved it.
You mean it's down there?
I think so.
Yeah, so we'll do a litigation update, guys, in the summer.
And some of all these petitions that have been filed.
Yeah.
Do we have a number of what that's actually costing the town?
Um, well, I've been doing them. And the first few, obviously, it took a lot more time because no one, there was no roadmap to actually doing it.
We've done one in 57 years.
Yeah, so there's no, there was no source to go to, and so learning experience. How many have we done? I think we've done nine. I'd say it's probably cost, off the top of my head, 3,500 bucks.
So, so far, and that's where everybody else in the town putting whatever they have to do?
Uh, that's not, I think maybe what you're referring to, there was a very timely APRA request, time-consuming APRA request, that's separate and apart from the petition. I don't even begin to know how to calculate that, because, you know, for my time, it's easy, but Terry has, Terry has like crazy hours in that thing, along with her staff. So if you were to monetize it, that APRA request, I bet you it's 10 grand.
So it's costing the taxpayers 10 grand on top of 13, another 35, so we're at 13,5, maybe 15,000 of tax pay.
And it's had to move a new roof conservatively.
Can we charge back the APRA request fees, the people that are requesting these happen?
Well, there is, there's a fee schedule for anybody filing an APRA request, but it's, it's de minimis.
They pay a flat fee for that request, right?
It's not, it's based on how much effort goes in, it's the median in which we. It's not, it's based on how much effort goes in, it's the median in which we deliver itself, it's a memory stick versus a printout. It's based on how voluminous it is, but at the end of the day, it's completely de minimis in the scheme of things. So what might have cost the town ten grand, we may have recouped five or six hundred bucks.
No reason.
That's how it should be, it's open government.
It's odd because it's from a former council member who has access to all those emails already. He's asking for his own emails.
You wouldn't have access to other people's emails?
But can that be changed at any point when, when it starts costing our town money?
Yeah, I think that's just the nature of doing a law. It's the nature of cost of doing business. You know, we try to, obviously, if it's too broad, there is, there are rules about APRA requests. So if they're broad, you try to, try to get them narrowed down, but that was, that was pretty broad and then we, we felt it was appropriate, so we had to comply with it, but it was, it was time consuming.
We can ask Terry about that. So in terms of just the budget for this, because we don't even need to do the manager and council, we can do that at the end so that Mike can come up, that this solicitor is in the two buckets that has the. Right, any other questions on our budgetary wise? Alright, so we'll do the one twenty and the twenty-five.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark, thanks for all your work.
Another question, how, how does the Belmont building fit into this year's and next year's budget?
That's a very good question.
That is a complex, that will be a complex question.
Alright, next we've got Mike.
So, community development starts on page seven. And three, what, three and nine. So we're, we're just only, even though it's, it's zoning board, we're going to start with zoning, Mike? And work our way through the pages as opposed to your.
Historic district commission is the lowest number, eleven twenty-nine. And there is a change there.
So page, yeah, page six.
Do you want me to just go through that? I, it's very, I think I just want to start, do you want, you want me to start with the department?
I think actually, if anybody has questions about historic zoning or planning, maybe they can just ask those and then you can jump into, without community development.
That sounds like.
These are pretty self-explanatory, historic commission, zoning board, it's basically the cost of doing businesses, stem it, stenographer costs. And so you have four, conservation commission, planning, zoning, historic. So all of those, you know, people can come back if they have questions. Yeah, those are pretty standard year after year. Nailing to a voters, stenographers and things like that. So let's jump to the community development.
Well, let me, I'll just give the brief for people who are behind me. So the historic commission's budget is fifteen hundred.
Yeah.
The zoning board's budget is five thousand four hundred and fifty. And the conservation commission's budget is eleven thousand two hundred and fifty. The reason, this will be the second year of the tree planting program. So that's ten thousand dollars, just because that's, it's in. And those are the three there. Planning board, that's you two, right, Mike?
Yes, of course it is.
It's five, it's five thousand four hundred and fifty. And so now we can go on to community development, which is on page twenty-eight.
For.
Nine.
Nine hour.
Yes.
Okay. So the planning department is made up of four people. I'm the planning director, obviously. We also have an environmental planner who is also the GIS coordinator for the town, that's Jill Sabo. We have a new planning technician, he used to be Bruce Luttrell, you might all remember him. He's moved on to Greater Pastures for himself and we have a new hire named Brent Wagon. He's been working with us since the first of the year. And of course our clerk Heidi Petron, who replaced Denise Russ last July first. The responsibilities, tell me, slow me down or stop me if you've already heard this before, but, you know, as, in my position, obviously I administer the entire office. I do the majority of the interaction that my office has with you folks. That is zone changes, company amendments, recommendations that go through the town planning board to you are also coordinated by me. Cockpit's plan, obviously, two hundred and some odd eight documents that took about four years to complete, was primarily my, my project along with the planning board and you folks. Certainly the staff assisted, but I was the primary individual in the office who was working on that. The other things I do, I write, I review all subdivisions and land developments. I, I am frustrating my two planners to learn how to do subdivision review of land developments, but right now they are in process. I give all recommendations to town council and I'm the primary staff to the planning board, although the entire department staffs and planning board. Jill, the environmental planner, has a very broad range of responsibilities. She was the primary coordinator of writing the hazard mitigation plan, which we just completed. And if you will recall, the hazard mitigation plan getting completed right around the holidays, Christmas holidays, facilitated the property, the ability for the engineering department to secure a three and three quarter million dollar grant for work at the Suis Drew Planes Center. She also handles all flood zone regulations. You may be aware that flood zone regulations at the state level become a much bigger issue. The state used to defer to FEMA on flood zone requirements, now the state is involved in that and Jill has handled updating our regulations. She, she coordinates site reviews. Site reviews is the term we use for doing zoning and zoning variance and special use permit analyses that go to the planning board for recommendation and to the zoning board for public hearing. Brett works with her as her assistant and he also does site reviews in another type of associated project called staff reviews. Staff reviews are allowed under section sixteen as zoning ordinance, I won't get into the details, but it's a really great component of our zoning, one we should be very proud of, which is that on projects that have very minimal impact, particularly in relation to our environmental overlays, the wetland overlay, the coastal overlay, the flood overlay, the high water table overlay. These projects can go through staff and be approved through staff without the necessity of a public hearing. If they have a very minimal impact and we have set standards in place upon which those decisions can be made. Both Brett and Jill will write those staff reviews. Those staff reviews have to come to the town engineer, the planning, public works director and the planning director for review and authorization. Once we all sign off on it, then the staff can sign the letter and send it out. Saves the planning board, saves the zoning board time, saves the APRA time. That process has been in place since early, well, late nineteen nineties. Then it was suspended in the early two thousands when we started with sort of the different organizational structure. So both Jill and Brett work on staff reviews and site reviews. Going back to Jill, again, she's the GIS coordinator. Now you heard, earlier you heard Dan talk about all the coordination he does with the IT functions here in town. Jill coordinates a subset of that, which is the GIS, the geographic information system, mapping system of the town.
Still off, I think.
No.
It's not off, those lines are true?
We have true lines now, yes. It just, if you, when you look at my computer, my computer hasn't been updated. But Jill has the new updated version, yes, and that version is the foundation of the GIS website that was opened, the link that was opened in the town website about three, four months ago. So now if you want to use our GIS maps, you can go through the town website, click on town mapping, go through a couple of links and you'll be right on the same set of program, the same set of maps that we use. You're using a different format of them and you certainly can't do all the manipulation we can do in-house. But you, you being any member of the public can utilize the GIS.
It's similar to SK, I haven't tried, I haven't tried.
Yes.
I got my own stuff here.
Jill's primary staff also to the zoning board, she and Brett write those reviews I told you about. They attend the zoning board meetings, she also attends conservation commission, public management commission and land trust. The latter three of which we provide a more generic set of administrative assistance. Primarily focused on helping them pull their agenda together and make certain that they have all the supplemental documents they need to carry out their, their work. We do not take the minutes of those meetings, we do not write lengthy staff reports for those, those boards. We do attend the meetings and provide general administrative assistance. Brett attends the meetings of the historic district commission along with me. And he is, he's being trained right now to do what Bruce has been doing quite well for a couple of years, which is to write the staff reports that go to the historic district commission. I oversee that activity. And he and I have been working collaboratively since he's only been with us for two months. But he's coming along very well and very bright in man.
How, how is the historic going?
It's going quite well. Yes, yes, we've been, I think they're, they're a board that the town has great, should have great pride in. They are a group that, that works very openly, cooperatively with applicants. They've shown a great deal of flexibility when applicants had.
Issues.
Unique circumstances. And in historic, there can be a lot of really unique circumstances.
Going back to staff review, how's the deck, deck less than fifteen percent of?
That, that, as you know, that ordinance was put in place a couple of years ago.
Anybody utilizing it?
It has been utilized probably less than you would think, probably less than ten times in two years. But it has had application, it has simplified a number of applications. The other thing that Brett does, shifting over to his responsibilities as a planning technician, is to assist the conservation commission with the adopt a spot program. You will be seeing some renewals in the next month. We have, I think we have a whole slew of like six or seven renewals coming in. He's been coordinating that for the last two or three months. And to alleviate numerous multiples of these coming to you, one or two at a time, he's been sitting on them, waiting for them all to line up. So you're getting one big influx of, I think, six or seven coming up in name.
Can you give more detail on that program?
Sure. The adopt a spot program is a program where any, any member of the public can adopt, take the responsibility of cleaning, primarily it's just cleaning, sometimes allowed mowing and light, light trimming of nearby vegetation of areas that are of public use but are not public parks, that would be the responsibility of park recreation or roadways or something that public works, the public would handle. These are, these can be roadway ends, many of them are. And what the individual does is sign onto a contract with the town that he or she will go out periodically, choose then like a bi-weekly basis, to pick up trash. That's ninety percent of the work. Some of the areas are big enough that have lawns, they will mow. Under limited circumstances, we will allow them to do some trimming of vegetation, but it has to be agreed upon and we have to actually do a site inspection with the applicant so we know what they're doing. They, they can, and that's about it. They, they provide monthly reports to us to let us know what's going on. Periodically in the monthly report, we find out that something big has happened, someone dumped a water heater or something. That report comes to me, send it over to Mike Ficico or someone else to, to address it. We've had other circumstances where roadway ends particularly have had pathways down to the water being eroded and needing to be improved, public works has acted on those also. We have, probably have, I'm going to shoot a number to you that is an estimate because I can't remember them all. We probably have seven or eight sites that are under contract total. And we have another handful, four or five sites that had been under contract in the past but are not today.
How long are the contracts?
They go two years.
And are those individuals or businesses?
They could be either.
Have they got a sign, right?
Yes.
So a business could have their, they basically have to get a little community advertisement, right?
Yes, yes, yes. So that's that. And also Brett does some special projects for me. He's, he's working right now on something that we started and unfortunately had to put on the back burner, but I know it's near and dear to some of your hearts anyway. And that is to try to streamline the work of the, the planning boards and zoning board to, to be able to potentially, with maybe some modest changes in the zoning ordinance, remove some of the projects that are of low intensity. We already talked about some that are of low intensity as they relate to the environmental overlays. There are some that are of low intensity that are not in the environmental overlays that we might be able to, with a slight revision in the ordinance, get those people out of the zoning board care and process because there's just virtually no impact. So we're working on that, we're researching that and we're, we're hoping to bring something to you fairly soon. So that's the office. Obviously Heidi handles all the clerical duties and she is my primary assistant with the CDBG program, which you saw just, you'll be seeing at your next meeting. And she is, if anyone's been in the office, you'll know that she has reorganized the physical orientation of my office. She's quite a, a space organizer and dynamo.
Responsible for the Christmas contest winning?
She won the Christmas contest virtually by herself. I, I think we all helped a little bit, but she, she was the brains behind the operation. If you want me to go through the, the department budget, I can do that. I can tell you that virtually, almost nothing has changed. Certainly the, you know, wages and the other employee related, formulae related issues in the top eight to ten lines have some changes. Some have been reduced. You'll note that. Long comp, I can't remember what that showed, longevity?
I'm sorry?
Longevity comp?
Yeah.
Yeah, longevity has been reduced because Denise retired. And a couple of things have been reduced. You'll notice that line items from vehicle allowance all the way down to office equipment, all the way down to office equipment repair, virtually unchanged. Office equipment has been reduced by two thousand. I put in a two thousand dollar request when I first submitted to the town manager in anticipation of buying a new computer, but as you heard from Dan earlier, the IT department is handling that expense, so that was shifted out of my line item as a zero account. That's really all I have there. I have a buyback health increase because my new employee chose to take that. That's all.
Any questions on any of the line items specifically? Thank you, Mike.
Uh, sorry, I was doing. Can you brush? Uh, so, uh, let me just double check.
Two things.
Yes. He is a couple. So you, you can, while I'm looking for your other.
It's a campaign zoning update.
Okay, that's one.
The GAS.
And then it would be the bike path is the main one.
So that's on the website now, right, JAS?
Yeah, the GAS mapping, that title is probably a little bit of a misnomer.
It's not on the front first page, right? It's not on the front page.
Why was the GAS mapping in the budget that could be a reference?
Because, because there is funding right there now, it is not quite a finished project. And so it is planned to be completed this year, but there's still dollars there. So if you look at page fourteen of it, if you go specifically to the, the project page, which is page fourteen, in the middle of it, you'll see project history. And there was eighty-four thousand sitting there June thirty eighteen. If we don't spend it all, it'll go in and carry. So that project is not totally zero yet. But, go ahead.
May I, I'd like to just add, what we're trying to do with the money that's in that budget is to initiate phase two of the project, which would provide us with some advanced updates, database updates that will, that will expand the data that would be, the number of overlays that you would be able to access through the website. Postal data updates, which still needs to be done, even though we have the postals. be done even though we have the parcels, because the parcels have been corrected by the shape, we need parcel updates for subdivisions and that kind of stuff. Building data update, very key critical element that I've been, I have been waiting on while all the rest of that project's been going on, the building update is something I really want to see, I believe we need to utilize, to be able to utilize the database to its maximum potential. Fire Department has asked for data development, parks and trails development has been asked for through Steve Wright and the Parks and Recreation Department. There were also zoning map updates, tax assessors requests, which may or may not have been resolved in phase one, I'm not sure, and address maps, we want to add physical addresses, the maps don't have those just yet. So that all totals out to $35,000.
What do they got, the flat map owner?
Well, we need to update the addresses of the owners, we have the addresses of the locations.
Right now you type, you click on the map, and you get the flat map, the owner's name.
Right, and you will have an address, but it's the address of the site, the address of the owner could be different.
We need to, we need to
Double check those two things, many of them are the same, those are the ones that live in town, but maybe not.
But none of those are in this year's capital budget, those are just ideas that you from the $84,000.
Those are part of the $35,000 that you do want to spend in the coming year, of this year, right now.
It's not in the budget.
There's $84,000, and that is 35 of it.
Right, so he wants to take 35 out of this $84,000, $270,000.
Thank you, yeah, that's the way to work, yeah.
Yes, and we'll carry the rest for the next
If we can get it started in this fiscal year, we'd like to, but we don't want to be foreclosed on July 1st.
Anyway, let's see, sometime, sometime you click on the map, and then another dialogue pops up, and vision appraised, we click it, and click on it, and we'll go like, vision appraised, and that.
Well, we don't have vision anymore, as you know, we have northeast.
Northeast, correct.
But
Be a link to that.
We're trying to make it seamless so you don't even have to do that.
Right, okay.
That's the objective, that when you click on it, the information just
Pops up.
Just, behind the scenes, that happens, but you don't see it.
Right.
The box comes up with the most up-to-date information, which we'd be updating on a daily basis, nightly basis.
So having this $35,000, how long will it take you to get this up?
All updated?
In four years?
Well, I don't want to say that because we do have, we have the foundation done now, we want to get it done in the next fiscal year, before July of
So what line item are we changing?
We're not, there's no money, money is set aside, it's already set aside, it's done, he has money on the line. At the end of it, we might actually be able to reallocate some of the balance in another year.
Of $84,000, $275,000.
Of the $84,000, he has plans for $35,000, and in a year we can readdress whether there are additional plans for Comp, if not, then maybe it could be reallocated in a year.
Do you have the flood zone overlay on there?
Usually we put it in
It's there, it's already there, don't worry.
So that money's there, taking a year.
That money was encumbered years ago.
You're going to drive on this so that we're all updated and we got all that done?
That's right, absolutely, and the reason
It only costs more as we go on.
Well, but the money is there to do any work, we don't need to ask for any greater, any more funds to be allocated. What we want to do, and we're hoping to do after we get done with phase two, is a second round with all the department heads, ask them what their likes and dislikes are with the GIS program, and what we can do to make it more efficient.
Because this only gets more expensive as you go, crazily.
It truly does, but when you keep it up to date, like the funding, the costs are incremental and more easily assimilated.
Good.
If you let it linger, that's when
And the Comp Plan as well is carried forward, there's no additional new funding being requested this year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, Mike.
I wanted to just touch on is the bike path, it's out there before
Page 91?
Yeah, 91, it's just that, that's the next phase of the bike path, and
The way in, I'm spending it.
We're not spending it, but it is a project in our capital projects.
Okay, I thought that would have been on the John's, but
Well, I know you, so all it is, is it's $2 million that's planned to be paid for by other sources, that's, I just wanted to touch on it for everybody to know
Do you want to take a break?
It is still a project.
I'll be back in one second.
But it is still a project.
Just to be clear, the bike path has two sections, both 4A and 4B, 4A is going out for construction this spring, it's being funded by a $3.25 million grant under the Green Economy Bond from two years ago, and it will pick up at Monford Road at the crossing, enter the elementary school property, go behind the school, around the side of the eastern side of the soccer field, and meet its temporary terminus point in the parking lot of the community center. That is a $3.25 million project. The $2 million project that Laura refers to is 4B, the hopefully final end of the bike path, which should bring us from the community center to the gravel parking lot at Anoxie Lane, and the final design on that is not yet underway, preliminary conceptual design has been done, it's been undergoing a readiness review with the Riddock staff, and we are still in process of communicating with them.
Was this really twelve?
Well, it's not, the thing with the bike path, it's not under our control, right? And then we got the memo that the money was going to go to bridges and roads, and then that was not done, right? But just for our budgetary purposes, you know, it's money being spent by grants at heart, and we don't, it's not, we don't have autonomy over it, and people tend to sometimes forget that, we gave a suggested route, and that's, from a budget perspective, the town's taxpayer
Very strong and important point to make, it's not our money, it's not our
We do provide advice and strong advice, but it's advice.
So that's the short version of it.
Thank you. Fires next, right?
Manager?
Manager and council is last, yeah, manager and council is last, I mean, we just didn't manage it for the solicitor because he was
So you're ready?
So it's page 43, of 15 to 17 of the document.
Welcome, thank you for your patience, I appreciate it.
Before we start I will be adding to this budget $20,000
But you're adding, you're adding all the details?
From the proposed budget, now the proposed budget actually came down, but I have to add another $20,000 in that, the personnel, I actually missed the June 30 bump of wages of a half a percent that was in the current contract, thanks to Chris, we caught it today.
So
So I will, yeah, it's generally all the way through, I will put it all the way through, you will have it tomorrow night by the time I hit my numbers.
The White House is not going, right? Let's just, White House isn't going, right?
White House will not be there.
I may show up then.
So I just want to extend an invitation to all of you personally to attend the vote ceremony, it's a ceremony that we've been looking forward to, and we hope you can all attend, it was a project that was completely funded by a Port Security Grant, no cost for town, as you're aware, it was a no match. And Senator Vee will be there, and we have my ceremony planned, so the Coast Guard will be there, we're using their facility for it, the Coast Guard we've worked closely with on this project, they were, they helped actually move the project forward for us, and then helped us with get the award to begin with, so we're happy to be able to work with them, so you're all welcome to attend.
Thank you.
So, full second order?
So just going through the budget, well, just to tell you about the department, just to fill you in, I know most of you are all aware of how we work here, it's, with 35 members on the department, there is one administrator, and that's myself, everyone, excuse me, three administrators, myself, secretary, and fire marshal, essential admin, everyone else, the 32 others are on a truck, they're working out on trucks in the field. So everyone else is in the union except for myself, I'm the lone standing one there that's outside of the union, there's no other deputies, or it's just the three, the three admin, that includes myself, and then all the others that work on trucks, there's 35. We have three stations, middle, north, south, there are eight on a shift, four platoons, four shifts of eight, so it's 32 plus the three admins, we do combination of fire, EMS, fire prevention, within the fire operations, we have a couple of different functions, so if you look through the budget, you'll see, you'll see that everything falls under the fire department, that includes the fire prevention division as well, and then we have EMA, EMA within the budgets, and there's a couple of part timers that are now within the EMA budget that we use to help with a lot of the programs, and that's augmented by EMPG grant funding, so I'll explain that to them. 93% of the budget really is non-discretionary, if you will, which means it's contractual, it's held to contractual obligations, so I've got a kind of a narrow window, pie, piece of the pie to work with of about 7% or so, so really that's more of a discretionary spending to augment everything else that goes with the fire department. Most of what we do is all EMS, we do about 66%, about two-thirds of what we do is EMS-related, the other third is fire. Fire prevention division is preloaded, we have, their primary responsibility is our fire code enforcement, as well as inspections, we have approximately 100, we have about 145 master boxes within town, that means those red boxes on the side of the building, those are the master boxes, along with another 60, 60 or 40, 40 or so, street boxes that we're trying to eliminate and take off the streets, because we really don't need some, those are those pole stations that you might see, the pedestal boxes. And then along with that, we have, Terry, we know the exact number, about 167 businesses that we do inspections as well, so each one of those businesses is required an annual inspection, and that is handled by our fire prevention division, Division One, and that's supplemented by some fire inspectors that we have within the departments. Unfortunately, the fire marshal can't handle all of those inspections, so we have to map them out monthly, and we have to bring in our fire inspectors on overtime to help with those inspections, because they need to be done at least annually. So there's a lot going on within the fire department, it's just not, you know, fire problem, fire operations, and EMS as well. We have a new robust marine operations program, with that is the vessel, along with a fire rescue, rescue swimming program, and we use rescue swimmers along with our watercraft, our smaller watercraft, jet ski if you will, to help with all the rescues, water rescues that we have. So I can start down the budget if you want, full-time wages, overtime, overtime has been, you know, the source of some contention over the years, I've worked with Laura on this number as well, trying to find a balance in between this, so essentially the number that I have in there now is a number looking back at previous years, and I have that in your packet there, and I've broken that down really to say, to show you, that's just exactly where the overtime costs are laid out within that. So I'm looking at the 906 number right now for overtime, and that's based between what we used previous last couple of years, and looking at it being adjusted to the inflationary value of the wages going up for the contractual of that two and a half percent that we're leaving to, so that the union gets a 5% kick at the end of this contract, along with 2% increase for the next fiscal year. So we're looking at those numbers, what we've done on average, based upon what we've had to use or predict or leave, much of it used in that area of vacation and IOD, we can expect to have somebody out IOD at some point during the course of the fiscal year, it's, the injury just happens. So the number that I'm looking at based upon all of that and the usage is at the 906 overtime If you ask me, can cuts be made in that area and looked at, I mean, if we had to say that, you know, a small reduction in that is doable, then we could look at that and revisit that again, but, you know, I'm basing my numbers on previous years, and when I budgeted last year at eight, I think it was, I was asking eight, 84, we came close, we came very close to that number, both for last year as well. So I'm basing a lot of it off of that, again, it's just predicting what is going to have to be filled, just keep in mind, one person, one person is out, it's a vacancy that's created, so I don't have any leeway of being able to not fill that spot, so if one person's out on vacation, I have to backfill that spot, so we work with a minimum of eight at all times in a shift.
And just as a side note, you don't see this because the year hasn't been completed, but the budgeted number that is here for this year is going to be almost $200,000 short in their budget for this year's overtime.
And much of that is linked to longstanding IOD, which we've had, if you look at the breakdown currently, within this year, this year's budget of IOD, it's up 77,000, oh, 70,000 of that currently is linked to one IOD event in particular, that's still pending and ongoing, so that has increased the costs of that overtime. My numbers that I've given you on the overtime, if you look at the actuarials and compare it, they're not, the actuarials are actually a little lower, that's because of, I had the hours, the overtime hours going out the door, there's money that comes back into us via the AFG grants that supplement that overtime, along with details that might be paid back, so that money, that money backwears back, so at the end of the fiscal year, when Laura does her auditing, those numbers, the numbers that I have compared to
Right, the actuals in the general fund may be less by an offset of a grant for some of the overtime that had attached to a grant.
So I track, I track usage, you know, that's what I do, so how many hours, how many usage hours that we're going out the door, but in turn, some of those usage hours are reimbursed back to us through grants and details.
Any questions on the operating budget?
If we go down, if you want to go down to professional services?
The overtime, yeah, IOD, is there any way to more training, or
We've
Get that number lowered?
You know, I've worked this out before, we've worked really hard to reduce that IOD, we have programs in place now, we have occupational health and safety programs in place, we promote a lot of functional training, we're trying to eliminate back injuries, we have a health and wellness program within
We have a health and wellness program within the department. We have three gyms, we encourage them to work out. Injuries are just something that is tough to avoid throughout the career. But we practice safe techniques, we promote safe lifting techniques. We have cots and stretchers now that are in each of the newer rescues. So those were funded through the AFG grant. Those are those power cots, so they no longer have to manually lift the stretches. They're battery operated, they lift up themselves, they slide them in, they load a patient into the rescues. Since we've had those, we've had no back-related injuries or IOD cases. We have had some in the past that have been linked to lifting of patients in and out of the rescue and a pedicure. So, I mean, I'm trying to fill the gaps and promote the programs where I can. But injuries are just something that inevitably will happen.
Did you get one time an award at the insurance?
Yeah, you know, if you go to, yeah, if the trust enters, you know, the trust actually recognized us for being progressive and trying to prevent injuries. If you look at, we were awarded an award for it. But if you look at the, if you track the injuries and how long somebody is out compared to firefighters compared to all the firefighters throughout the state, they're not out as, I say that now. They're not out as long, for instance, a shoulder injury, an injury, some type of effect. We're not, we are not out as long as other firefighters compared to throughout the state.
So then let's look at.
Did you want, I really, the increases that I made, if you want to go down to professional services, since two oh one, five zero two oh one, there was a, I was asking for an additional increase of thirty-two, what was it?
From five thousand to eight thousand.
Professional services.
Five zero two zero one.
Five zero two zero one.
Actual is five thousand thirty-eight, and you're asking for seven thousand two hundred, and the manager's giving eight thousand now.
Yeah, and that was a lot of it primarily due to the expected costs of hiring an EMS medical director to oversee our EMS program. According to the new revision of the Ryanville Department of Health regulations, they're requiring you have more medical oversight for your programs. And I serve on the ambulance service advisory board as well and am involved with this new regulation. So we're in essence going to have to hire an EMS director, if you will, pay that.
Because of the state mandate.
To have more oversight to assist our program. The extent of it is, I don't know, I'm working with, working on that program.
More purpose, better service?
Quality insurance, overseeing the program, making sure that we're doing the correct training. There's been instances of, for instance, endotracheal intubation, when you put a tube down, someone's esophagus. There have been times where they missed, it's going down, when it's going down to the trachea, it's going down to the esophagus. So the Ryanville Department of Health wants more oversight, and we have not accounted that, but other issues out of town. It's just an example. And then to just build out more quality insurance in the program, we're reviewing EMS run reports and things like that. There's a lot of state protocol in this stuff, which gets updated constantly, which we really don't have anything to say about. And most of that budget goes towards the funding of our annual ladder pump testing, hose testing that needs to be done by, you know, outside. You see that comes in now and does all the testing. Whereas previously, we did, we tried to do it internal, but it's just too much, it's too technical, the liability's too great. We've had some injuries related to it, guys, I had to hire them back on overtime in order to do the work, and it just wasn't economical. And I didn't want to be susceptible to the liability of somebody getting injured or going on doing it because it is pretty labor intensive. You have to repack everything and all that. The other increase is two one four, uniform claim. Again, that's just, most of the others are just related to the cost of doing business, price increases. Uniform cleaning service has gone up. The others have stayed the same. Account three oh five under supplies, cost of four copiers within the station, ink cartridges, all of that, that's going up. The rest of the accounts are going down, leading to professional development. That's account three one, five zero three one five, that's going up. Asking under that for another $3,200, and that's related to the cost of sending a new firefighter to municipal fire training academy. The cost there is about $3,200 a year, when you factor in the textbooks and uniforms that you have to provide for. Whereas before, we used to do that internal and try and coordinate that with other fire departments to get them trained. But that was all having to be supplemented by, again, overtime for instructors and things. So now we send them much more to police, to a municipal training academy to get their twelve weeks of training. Then they come back to us for about four weeks for internal training. So that's where most of that increases, that's where that increase has come from. PC software, three twenty, that is much of all the software that's involved. That includes our CAD system, we share the same CAD system with police. So that's to pay for our share of that P, that's a computer aided dispatch systems, TRITEC or IMC. We have our own record management system that we use that includes the cost of that. These are for annual contracted services. Again, we do EMS, so we have a separate EMS software program that we have to use for patient care, patient care reporting. That's another company image trend, and that's used throughout the state, most of the entire state uses that, but there's fees involved. We have, includes a fire EMS software, online training, and includes the program that Tony from the building inspectors talked about, viewpoint. What we do all around online committing, so you can go on any interview, you're allowed to be for plane reviews and things like that. Scott, is there any room for increase in some of the inspections or anything like that that is being done? Where we've been in a, you know, five years, we've been at a level point of X amount of dollars. Yeah, yeah, in fact, we're, I've been meeting with my fire marshal, Ted and Tuttle, and we're actually looking at our, not only our fee structure that we charge, some of it's obligated under the fire code. The fire code is pretty specific of what you can charge for smoke detector inspections and things like that. But as far as charging other fees for plane review fees, inspection fees, the cost of going in and doing the inspections that we talked about for the businesses as well, and looking at a fee structure for that. Again, that would be a policy decision, you know, we're putting something together for a proposal to be able to present to you for that. So we're working with the fire marshal, fire marshal on that. We do bring in revenue. On the revenue side for fire prevention, we bring in, on average, about $30,000 a year. That includes plane reviews, smoke detector inspections, things like that. And that'll vary according to how many plane reviews we do on a commercial line, that's where you make the money. So if we have a commercial building, we charge on projected costs as opposed to square footage. So it's the projected cost of that building, which is generally set by the architect of the building. So we can revisit that as well, we have, we can admit that. So just going down to your account fee, thirty, uniforms, again, that's a $5,000 increase that we're looking at for uniforms. Much of that is consumed by contractual ends. The firefighters get $600 per year, times the thirty-three, I believe, Laura, times thirty-three. Because it doesn't include myself and the secretary. It comes out to nineteen, just under $20,000 alone, just for that. And then the rest of it is to replace the turnout gear, any broken gear, elements, things like that. To replenish one set of gear for just a turnout set of gear, just the COVID pain is $5,000, excuse me, $25,000, it's about $25,000, just for one second.
Does that have a mandate, how often would you change that?
They say ten years, it's about ten years that you're looking to get a set of gear. We had, we were successful in an AFG grant previous years to buy sets of gear before, so that helped upon that. That's running out, so we need to look at being able to replenish, then replacing those sets of gear. Those are ten-year periods, it's going to be coming up. But what I budgeted here is really just operational, that's anticipation of replacing hires, I won't say new hires. It's somebody retiring and having to replace an either damaged set of gear or somebody coming in, for instance, a new hire that we have now to replace the vacancies. It's expensive to replace all those individuals.
Let's get a guy that's the same size.
You know, unfortunately, they're fitted their size, they're specific to the individual.
So he can move, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, sure. All right, can you even mention it then?
No, actually not.
All right. Gasoline, lubricants, that's going up, anticipation of cost increases on that. And then also, to help supplement, you know, we do have Marine Two, new fire asset now, so whatever.
Is that a line out?
No, for fuel, for fuel.
No, just for in general?
No.
No.
Should it be?
It's just, it's just.
I can track maintenance costs on that, that's right, because everything is.
Or is it what, from eight thousand and do it to bottom?
Yeah, we have a record management system that we have now, it actually has a maintenance module. So we can track all our costs related to maintenance, and that, that'll be all tracked. So if you, how much you spend on that boat, I can pull up a report for you.
Scott, you have done such a great job, your department in grant writing. Are there grants we can actually get for maintaining this, for the training, for keeping up on this vessel? I'm glad we have it, I'm going to be there on Thursday, but can you get some grant money to us running?
Yes, yes and no. There's grant money that we continue to get for training, for training purposes. And we are, we're submitting a grant now, we have submitted a grant for that, for additional training for the Marine Operations Program. So we constantly submit grants, and training is always one of our priorities, we have one now. Also to improve the infrastructure around there, the security, the access to cameras and things. We're looking to submit grant funding for that.
Can we get South Kingstown to also raise grants, because we'll be using this Rachel A. a whole lot, right?
Well, when we put the grant request in, we let them know that as far as profitability classes that we may respond to.
Other committees?
Yep, and that really increases your chances of getting a grant. So we can kind of include that already within the grant. There is pending legislation right now at the state level for helping to augment communities, municipalities who have a vessel like this within the Narragansett Vaynerly Task Force. So that right now would augment the programs, $10,000 towards operational costs for your vessels. So that's pending right now. And I think the CARTEX last budget season bumped that out, so that didn't go through the framework by chiefs. So I'll be lobbying for that, we'll be lobbying again for it, and we'll see.
The Red Community community do that type of craft, right?
In our area, there's, yeah, there's a few, there's North Kingstown, there's ourselves right now, there's Portsmouth, Portsmouth as well. So right in our area, there's just a few. So yes and no, there's some sources for funding for that.
Awesome, Senator Reed's going to be there, is there anything you can talk with him about that, Sarah Currell?
We already lobbied him, we were down in Washington on April 10th. So fire chiefs do a trip down there, it's a day trip every year annually. And we met with a whole retired congressional delegate. So we met with White House, we met with Reed, and they were together. And they spent some time with us, and so we laid all our forms and the points. And we stress the needs to help keep funding a lot of these programs down there as well. We met with Representative Sisal Lani-Lanjman. And there seems to be some push to not only include AFG or federal funding for vehicle replacement, equipment replacement, but also replacement of fire stations, to get funding to build the building, fire stations and police complexes. So we'll see where that goes, so that's been, that's kind of the push down there right now. So yeah, we've done it, we continue, we continue as, continue as we work.
I think we said the things.
Next, I did a telephone, there was an increase in the telephone. We've had to add a, that includes all our air cos, mobile data terminals require access, so includes all those air cos. We've had to add a couple of iPads to help with the inspections, all the inspections that we go out to get them into our record management system. So it required a couple of additional air cos, so those are reflected in that increase.
Now you email it now, right, you email it.
Yes.
You like that, right? Yeah, well, you know, the attorneys didn't like it at first, you need the original.
Correct.
And then they, it stopped, don't have it, you want me to do it.
The other increase was in five oh six, equipment maintenance and repair. And really, all of that is related to equipment maintenance contracts. We have a lot of them that we require for, it's only EMS equipment we have, it's different related to the cots, to the CPR compression boards, all of those required maintenance contracts. A big chunk of it is, chief has testified to this, is Motorola, all our radios. And that alone is about $17,000 a piece for both, goes to maintain the contracts, both $17,000 for both sides for police and fire, for maintenance contracts of all radio systems. And then it's other equipment, our air compressor, our panel vent. We have an ongoing equipment repair PO that we keep open for shipments. He's one of our equipment suppliers, who have to repair things that we send to them as well. And that's really it for the increases. Everything else was essentially level funded, even EMA, EMA did not change at all. There's a $4,000 part-time wage back in there. That's $4,000 to supplement the EMA staff, the part-time staffs that we hire for EMA, especially as we have two and everything, assist work on our programs. Revisions of the COOP program, Consumer Operations program, Emergency Operations program, and so on, this is involved. And we actually supplement that with EMPG grants, emergency repair is a grant that we get through RIN. And so they match us essentially $4,000, so there's $8,000 available there. $4,000 on the town side, $4,000 from the state, from the state side, the most fortunate.
One other note on the budget is you will see a new department, both in fire and in police. The state requires us to break out, I'll call them civilian positions. So in fire, it would be Judy, in the police, it will be administrative secretaries or admin assistants and those type. And this way, our. And this way, our budget will match the state reporting. I used to have to go back through and pull out all the wages, and now it's a separate department just for the line items that I have to report separately. So there are new departments now, just to offset that state reporting.
So if you have any questions before we have a.
Anything on the operating, or are we going to capital?
I know, I got, been a bit of a horse here, but the overtime, thirty-nine percent vacation. I know it was all contracted on the contract, but can you, can we get any ways so that thirty-nine percent comes down? Why we not, right?
Right now, contractually, we can have up to four out on vacation per shift. So it could be four out on vacation. It's there. You know, when we budget for this, we look at how many vacation time, how many vacation days do they have, how many they have earned. So anyway, you look at it, it's budgeted, whether they take the four out then or whether they take it out to the cost of, yeah, they use it, they have it and they use it. They can carry up to ten days. So can we, it used to be limited to two out on vacation per shift. During negotiations, they wanted to increase it. I was not necessarily opposed to it at the time, so they went up to four. That's in addition to having personal, somebody out on personal leave, somebody out, might be out on sick leave. And, you know, I really do track closely the leave, and you can see, we track it all. Every one of these leave purposes has a reason code, and that goes through payroll, payroll signs. We have this reason code, and so we break it all out and see why.
Chief, can you think of a savings with the training, probably have the EMA?
Yes, yes, I do, because some of the training we had to do was paid at the time and a half rate, and we had talked about that before, and I was pretty excited about securing that agreement with the unit. So now we paid out additional twenty hours at a straight time rate. Either way, we have to do the training, we have to get it done. I wasn't doing as much of it because I didn't want to spend the additional overtime costs of another time and a half. But now, being able to budget for the straight time, it makes it, it makes it more, it means it more palatable on my end. So yes, in those twenty hours, we voted for not only training, but also there's a professional development component as well. So we can continue to get professional-based, standard-based training.
So as we transition to the capital, another thing for the council is, as you're going through this, and we're going sometimes more line item. I'd say I look at it a case-by-case basis, there's another option that sometimes I've seen council members advocate for. If there's a department and you want to, you can say, see the total that's going five thousand nine hundred and twenty-nine, you can say, that should be reduced by X dollars or by a percentage, you can do that for any department. That's another approach, and then you give the department and the discretion, the places in which they can. So if you're concerned about things like leave overtime and other issues, that's another way to do it instead of cutting the overtime line or closing mine, you know. So I'm, don't get nervous, Scott. I'm doing it, I'm having the conversation here, you can do it to community development, you can do it to Parkinson's record. I want to move to capital, I think, I want to, like, the people know they have that option when we get to third day.
It's true, because ultimately, the department has to come in at the department level, not on the line item level. So even if you were to cut his overtime, he can still overspend it as long as bottom line. So it is a bottom-line budget for every department.
See, my issue is that each line item, I really do scrutinize it and I go through it. So I'm trying to fund absolutely what I need to fund within that line item. So if you say it's your bottom line, it's your bottom line, well, and we don't properly fund the overtime, it affects those other things that I have run over, in those other areas, those line items. So it has, we have to answer the taxpayers, and I want people to understand, you can do the line item approach, or you can look at it globally, and it's not just this department. And then some people have been across the board, some people have that view, so capital.
Capital is page thirty.
I still got a question. Six, six things, how many days per fire in a year?
It's accrue, they accrue them at a rate of one and a half, six days per month.
Same as, same as the other contracts?
Eighteen, sixteen?
Annually, and they can accrue them, if they don't use them, if they don't use any for six months, they get an additional personal day the following year. And they can accrue up to one hundred and eighty across the, through the course of their career.
Alright, back to vacation. When do we go, what year do we go from two to four out on vacation?
I don't remember off the top of my head, it was back a couple of contracts ago, so.
Was it about a year, two?
Yes, so it had to be twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, somewhere in that area.
Alright, what about Vacanton? Yeah, Vacanton, what's going on with that?
The vacancy, that was a vacancy due to retirement that we had from the previous fire marshal.
You mean the shorthanded?
Yeah, we short.
So again, capital is on page thirty-three. Chief, I'll just start with the project, and if you want to interject, feel free. So there is fifteen thousand for the radio equipment replacement fund. It's not a new project, we basically put fifteen thousand dollars a year in for that, that's project number one.
Yep, and this is just, it's an ongoing project to replace our older radios, mostly our portables. The police chief's in a similar situation, we have some portables that are aged and no longer going to be covered on the maintenance contracts for more than.
Very spare parts for that, a lot of that is stuff.
Yeah, yeah, so if we do send them out to get fixed, it's usually, beyond the contract, it's usually four, five hundred dollars to repair our portable, that might be, to go through it and replace it if they still have the parts. That's ongoing, and for fire portables, they're a little more expensive than police portables because there's, they have to be rugged eyes and there's a intrinsic factor, they can't, they're going to go into gaseous areas. You can't, you can't really keep them light, they have to have certain mechanisms for certain parts. So they're a little more expensive, and they're about forty-five hundred dollars a piece. That includes all the accessories that go with it, you know, and the rest as well. And then that's just our portables, and then our mobile radios will need to be replaced at some point as well. Those are expensive, those are currently out of maintenance agreement, that's just a, so we have to send those out to service. That could be costly as well. So there needs to be a mechanism, an open place to help to maintain it, with the portables and equipment for us, which is the radios. EMA rounding EMA helps to support the program in any degree. We have to buy and purchase the devices and maintain the devices around EMA to support the infrastructure. Kind of like the way you buy Horizon, Horizon will give you the tower, that supports the infrastructure, you go to buy the device and pay for maintenance agreement, so that's sort of that.
Alright, number two is vehicle replacement, so what vehicles in these next three years are we looking at?
It's a pumper, it's a pumper replacement. We have a twenty-two-year-old pumper that we're trying to replace, that's thirty-four.
And what's the total cost that ended for it?
To replace it, six hundred thousand.
And so we have a hundred already, and we have in another five hundred. It was planned to be a two-year purchase, so we do have, that would give us the funds to replace into four.
And then we have, it looks like we have roughly the same amount in the next two years, so we have two more trucks that we're replacing?
We have three rescues that we currently have, one.
Are we thinking of replacing each of them in the next three years?
We need to at least think about replacing one of the rescues. So we have two rescues that are, let's see, how old are they, this? Nine and ten years old, yeah. So we have two rescues that are currently, rescues that one is ten years old, one is nine years old, and we have to do a rescue that we just recently purchased, that's a twenty-eighteen. And then we rotate them around to get the most we can out of them. They usually say that rescues should be replaced every seven years. That's if it's a constant frontline rescue, running, running, running for seven years straight. We get it, we rotate them. Fortunately, we have only one once primarily police staff, the others are cross-staffed, so we get a second rescue. So that's really a priority in the vehicle replacement plan, is replacing that pumper. Right now, we would take, what it would do, we'd take one of our frontline pumpers and put that one in reserve, where it should be already, because that pumper is now fourteen years old, that's one of our primary pumpers is fourteen years old. It should already be in, it should already be in active reserve, actually, it should be in reserve role, and it's not. They generally say that twenty years of a pumper is good, ten years as a primary active, you know, it's constantly going on the roads. Another five years in active reserve, meaning if you need it, because one's getting serviced, you put it go, put it on the road. And another five years for reserve, active reserve, meaning there's no equipment on it, you don't maintain it, but should you need it in an urgency, you have it. We don't have that luxury to have two pumpers in reserves, so we generally just go with an active reserve pumper, trying to ten vision years on it. And we've been pretty good with that, especially DPW and the maintenance division, they work hard at maintaining the apparatus.
And then you have equipment replacement miscellaneous.
Well, I want to go on, I want to just say what happened between the department request and the manager is, we did move one of the rescues, he was looking to actually replace, what, Rescue Two, isn't it, Chief? In the current year, but the funding was not there. So Rescue Two was moved out a year, so that in next year's capital, it will actually be, it's planned for two rescues and the bucket truck.
Is that a forty-five recovery?
Seven forty-five is two rescues and a bucket truck.
Bucket, any fire prevention?
It's a fire prevention truck, and I can talk a little bit about that, but it's essentially the bucket truck we use to maintenance the fire alarm. All the cable systems, which is a whole other project, capital, budget.
So, okay, so project three is equipment replacement, and this is basically, again, an ongoing replacement. This year, it's twelve, five, and Chief, what's it for?
This was to replace the compression boards that we use, they're called Lucas boards. They're essentially a hands-free compression device to give CPR to people in code instances, cardiac arrest instances. We use them whenever we have, unfortunately, have a cardiac arrest event, we use them all the time. They're required to give thirty minutes of on-scene CPR time, you might have heard that advertised. So you're really not supposed to move an individual, thirty minutes on-scene given CPR, it's moving the protocols, it's regulated. So if you have to do CPR, you try and do CPR, manage to try and do it for thirty minutes straight. And it requires a lot of hands, to do it time quickly, so this device frees up hands, basically frees up personnel we can maintain that, those compressions and those, but they're expensive, they're medical devices, they're expensive. There is trade-in options for it, I do have some other old EMS equipment that I'm looking at selling as well. That could go towards this project, but a new one generally costs in the area of fourteen thousand dollars. And ours are.
Do we strap them to their chest?
You lay them underneath it, and it pumps their chest. We use the older technology now, they're no longer going to be serviceable when they're under maintenance contracts. So we need to look to.
So you lay them on their stomach?
You lay them on their back.
On their backs?
Slide this, if slide this, it goes over, it's an arching device that goes over, and there's a plunger that comes down.
Oh, right.
And then, you know, we have, sometimes we have longer transport times as well because we've been diverted more often from South County Hospital, where I'm much more often. So it just doesn't end at the thirty-minute mark on scene, it continues, so you have to.
You charge them for us, right, with the insurance charge?
We can talk about EMS billing revenue, yeah, we do get EMS billing revenue, and we've been getting somewhere in the neighborhood of half a million dollars annually, so we're expecting it.
Since we're giving curbside services.
So that was.
Are we on the lower end of the pay scale, is there a state mandate, or you can only charge so much, how does that work?
Well, you can, basically, you can charge as much as you want, but you only get, the insurance companies will pay back to you. And they're not good, so some of them are good, you get back.
And so number five is the equipment light pack.
The light pack?
We skipped the fire alarm?
What is the?
I can do this.
I was just, I was just going to explain the fire alarm, all it was is, he did request ten, that was postponed out a year. Again, a matter of priorities.
And that's a huge, that's to replace this stuff, this over here, wired stuff, and go with radio boxes. We maintain all this, that's what we use the bucket truck for. And it's labor-intensive, it's not, it's, well, it was originally put in the sixties, but we've been maintaining it, and it's labor-intensive and expensive to put it up, especially if you have to dispose it. And there's so many different areas which, yeah, you have to dispose it. We're looking to get rid of it, there's existing money now, sixty thousand dollars that.
Phase one of the project, so.
That we rolled over for phase one, so that would go to replace, initially, phase one would replace deep boxes on our town buildings to be able to create an infrastructure for it, and then it would extend out to all the other.
To wireless.
To all the other businesses in town.
Five is the light pack, again, it's another ongoing replacement, and it's ten thousand dollars.
Yep, we originally purchased these through, again, an AFG grant, it was a $20,000 grant that was originally, we bought all these monitors. That was actually a number of years ago, and I'm just looking to, I think I'll plan a replacement program in place to replace them because they're starting to age as well. And one of those monitors, I think it was forty, it's forty thousand dollars, I don't know, used to replace one, just one of those.
Six is repairs to Station Two and Three. The change, the department had in sixty-five thousand, but there was twenty-nine thousand that was already in place. So basically, the new funding for this, even though the project at sixty-five thousand is thirty-six thousand into the budget. And that's the last project.
Yep, and this project is for Station Three. We talk about roof replacements, primarily, the roof needs to be replaced, it's been leaking over the last several years, really, and we've made repairs over the years, we spent, since two thousand and six through twenty eighteen, we spent over thirteen thousand dollars a day to repair it, we've done everything we could.
Which building?
This is Station Three, Fire Station Three.
North end, south end?
It's the north end fire station. It's caused leaking into the interior of the building, it really needs to be addressed. We've had roof contractors looked at it, looked at it, we've had our corps look at it.
And they can't fix it?
They've tried a number of things, essentially.
There's no valley, there's no valley, it's just a straight roof.
Yeah, it's just because, they think it's because it's a long sloping roof, it's not a pitched roof where one run off, and we've had water essentially just not run off.
It's on the north side?
They've glued down shingles, they've done what they could to.
Did it on the side? We do the Station Three fix in this year. Can we do the station three fix in this year, capital, and the station two fix the following year? Have a little bit of savings to spread the two.
Yeah, I believe I can get the project done at station three for around, under, within that sixty-five thousand.
What's going on at two?
Oh, that's just the overall project is two and three.
Station, station two, much of, much of the work's already been completed, station two, it's, it's more trim, replacement of doors, windows to the stations, back end, back end. But station three, it's such as the roof for that project, includes replacement of windows at station three, the north end station, as well as the trim, as well as, same blast the entire building and painting it, repainting the building because their work needs to be done to the exterior of the building. It hasn't been painted since the addition, just the addition portion was painted. So it's all cracked peeling, it's more than easily repaired. I get a quote from Accor that that entire project could be done for around fifty-five thousand within that project, so I believe I have enough in my capital now to be able to complete that whole, that whole project. If, you know, that's, that's.
Look, three tab shingles?
But you could split the roof off from the rest of the work.
Not necessarily.
Yes, yeah, we are looking at that, maybe just getting, getting the roof project on, getting the roof project and then doing the rest of the exterior work with that Accor.
So that would like split it over the two years, the sixty-five?
Well.
We already have funded some of. The additional funding is thirty-six thousand.
You've split the thirty-five thousand on sixty-nine?
I, I, I have to, yeah, I could, I could get the roof, could did the roof project, I'll get the roof project done for this next fiscal, fiscal year and then you're saying look at.
I'm just talking about making some changes.
Is that it, sir?
Yep, that's your last project.
So total capital this year is seven oh three.
Current resources is only five seventy, five seventy-four.
Meaning what we have to put in this year?
Correct.
All right, any other questions? Thank you.
Next, next, chief.
All right, so we got.
Okay.
A few left today.
Yeah, you're going to win them, we're. We've got enough situations.
It's Thursday, yeah. Their, um, town, so town manager and town council, we'll like wrap it up.
Chief.
All right, thank you.
Your third one.
Okay.
Town manager on page ten. And page three.
You can see this is really helping. You can talk about it, it's, it's paid benefits. What's the healthcare thing up there?
It's, it's a weekly plan.
I know.
It was previously under a buyback.
Okay. Good, and this includes Patty, right?
Yes.
All right, any questions on that one?
Nope.
And then just our budget. So the big items here are the, the legal services really, and. All right, any questions on that?
Sorry, what are the part-time wages for us? That's higher than what we get, right?
No.
Seventeen thousand?
Times five.
Oh, five.
Yeah, maybe I'm not getting paid the same.
I forget what the rates are, I'm not sure, but they.
We get two thousand each, right?
Yeah, we get like two thousand, right?
Unless, doesn't president get more? I don't know.
Oh, whatever.
It's, it's just.
I trust you.
God, wait a minute, I have it, just wait, it's just wait.
Yeah, it should be ten thousand.
On page four. Just sixty-eight. Under here. Oh, it also includes a probate judge and the sergeant in arms. It's twenty-one hundred each.
And the probate judge is, guess what?
Six.
Six thousand for the whole year. Okay, so it's six plus eleven, okay, plus the small sergeant, okay.
So the professional services, we did not touch your budget, under that twenty, that professional services of the twenty-five thousand nine fifty, it was the twenty-five thousand dollars in that mine was originally earmarked for the fire study that has since not been used for the fire study.
So it's still there?
So, well, this is an additional twenty-five in next year. I, I don't know if you have it earmarked for anything.
Oh, so you're saying the twenty-five nine on professional services could be cut?
Services could, twenty-five could be cut.
That's up to you guys, what do you want to do? Do you want to leave the line item or eliminate or reduce it?
Leave it, leave it.
Leave it. It could also be used for architecture.
Yeah, so we'll leave it.
I just wanted to let you know, we didn't touch what was funded last year. And then, did we do special appropriations? Special appropriations this evening, we could handle, that is under your department, page sixty-eight.
Yeah, just summarize that, that's, I know.
This page twenty-five, sorry. I'm just looking to see if everybody, so the difference, every, every agency is level funded, that had been previously funded. We took out Washington County Regional Planning for six thousand dollars because we're not getting that.
Kind of on the back, yeah.
Yep, and then the increases actually, the dollar amounts, the minimal dollar amounts that South Kingstown's looking for, the senior, senior daycare and the nutrition program. So the change in the, in the budget is, so, three thousand dollars.
And that's because of the sharing agreements.
Right.
So basically, long ago, just sort of the history on this was that these, and it was before I was even elected, there was a lot of appropriations and then basically it's for, it's for like hunger and clothing, it's for like necessities, things like Johnny Cage, you see, it's not for every little organization.
Right, but, but, you know, it's also the museum, the historic society.
Right, right, but those are like, the ones, there used to be like a litany of.
Correct.
It's really the ones that aren't, things like the historical society or the shared arrangement with South Kingstown are basically for hunger and shelter.
The one on here that I was thinking about, we received a really substantial letter from South County Museum detailing all that they do for the community, for the schools, and I'd like for us to consider to at least fund the same that we do for the historic society. Since my understanding, Chantwood, they're required to pay, they lease the property from us, but they're required to pay insurance for that, so a good amount of this money that we give them just goes for that alone. So I, it's in Aragantit, actually here in Aragantit, I mean, Johnny Cage does great stuff, perspective, they all do great things, but we have, can push, that's what we did last year, we gave the historic district, historic society in Aragantit, a thousand dollars more because they actually have to rent out their buildings if they don't have one. So I think we should consider the same with this, because, because they are actually physically here in Aragantit and do some great stuff for our schools and the city.
Yeah, I would support that as well. They're doing, it seems like they're doing more and more programs actually over the years.
What kind of insurance?
Well, they, they, we own the land, we own it and lease it for us, they have to, we require, they have to get it anyway, but there's insurance that they have to pay, so a good amount.
Can we put that under the trust? No, that's a bit.
It's not ours.
So you're going to say that kind of museum to five thousand?
Yeah, that would be great, I think, I think they do a lot.
So they own the building, they lease the land?
Yeah, and then they run a lot of programs for the town.
So is that a.
Yeah, we'll put that on.
Wonderful, I will add that to the department when I make the changes. That is it.
You want to tear it, do you want the emissions?
I don't know that that's meant.
Laura, before we, we did it, we did work with emissions, if everybody.
Yeah, we did that through.
Before everyone wraps up, so in terms of just a summary of what items, I think we should just do a list of that, not dollar, not, not just a dollar, but what was kind of, rental registration.
Okay.
That was the fifteen dollars times two seven five oh.
That is, yep.
The IT was, the IT number four, capital, ten thousand per year over sixty years, so we highlighted that.
I'm going to write it down.
Page fourteen in the GIS mapping, community development, if you, your notes match this, the thirty-five thousand. South County Museum increased by a thousand. Fire, you said there was an increase of twenty thousand coming in that you spread across the budget, Laura?
I have some other, I have some other changes to.
Capital fire number six was sixty-five thousand, we've talked about that, whether you have besides that.
I'd have to roll pitch page, would you just bear with me for a minute?
Department fees, all right, did you get that one?
Tony's turn.
We didn't do anything on that yet, so.
Right, so, so it will be, Tony will tell us what kind of increases there. It is the rental registration up till eight seven two fifty.
Yeah. Christine, you do take notes when I was, the ten thousand, capital IT number four.
Number four.
We didn't make a decision on that, but we did discuss it with Japan.
Right, right.
Capital budget, GIS mapping, page fourteen. Said you want to see, Mike had the whole thirty-five thousand, it was sticky and all that, but, but I think should be discussed.
Right, it's South County Museum.
South County Museum's a thousand. And Laura, you had said coming in, fire had an increase of twenty, that you were going to scatter for.
Yes, that's, that's the percentage. You will also see that I am changing the OPEB contribution and the health and dental, that will all come back to you.
In each department?
Yep.
Yeah.
And I'm also going to make the change for the release bump in wages, again, they had a six-thirty bump that I missed, so that will be in it and I will give you new numbers on the unassigned fund balance, because I'm going to throw it all, all the changes are going to be made to the unassigned fund balance usage. So you will have that tomorrow night, I will give you a new number for that.
All right, and then everyone sees that we have tomorrow night, so we've got that scheduled at six o'clock.
Correct.
All right, thank you, everybody, so we'll continue the work sessions tomorrow.